Everybody's here. Are you comfortable?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, guys. Yeah. Welcome to the June 17th San Carlos Planning Commission meeting, and please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Marsters.
Present.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Present.
Commissioner Corral.
Present.
Vice Chair Silberman is absent this evening, and Chair Harper Pedersen.
Present.
Thank you. Before we get started, I would just like to take a moment to thank Commissioner Michael Corral for his service on the Planning Commission. He's been with the Commission for a year, I believe, and it is wonderful to have someone take the time and dedicate towards serving their community, and I just think that's a good time to thank you. And I provided you with a little send-away, some treats to keep you going for tonight, and just wanted to say thank you very much.
We really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yay! And feel free to pass those treats down.
Yeah.
Or keep them, or pass them down. Okay, great. We're gonna go ahead and move on to public comment. Public comment is actually limited to items that are not on the agenda. Is anybody here to speak on items not on the listed agenda? Paul, you wanna come on up?
Yeah. Actually, I put it on the table.
Oh.
Appropriate to say in public comment.
Okay.
I just wanted to make note that PG&E, while excavating and trying to put in that shut-off valve on the gas main on Branston, they ran into 300 cubic yards of PCB-contaminated soil. So they found a place to put it. I simply asked that they put a tarp over it or something, because I know at Delta Star, when that happened, the dirt pile just sat there for years, and it was blowing contaminated dust all over.
And that was over on Branston?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here to comment?
So, it's really interesting. We've been trying to set up a meeting about everything, and everything is how it's being determined by our city council. So, there was a meeting with folks on a specific project related to what is on the agenda tonight, and we were not allowed to have a meeting with the same group, Ron and Karen, because they wouldn't meet with us, but they would meet with them because it related to other things beyond the Transit Village. So, I wanna make a statement tonight saying that I will not be speaking about the item that's agendized because they're separate. So, I wanna talk about, you guys are gonna be hearing a really important series of issues tonight, one of which is the Transit Village, which we're not talking about. But the others are related to the neighborhood and this kind of extrinsic mitigation piece, which really is about, we know we're gonna have a massive impact, and we also know that your Planning Commission reluctantly approved an EIR that you guys all expressed some dissatisfaction with, but approved anyway, and now we're gonna talk about the entitlements. There are a lot of extrinsic factors that don't relate, that we're not talking about right now, that are gonna be a huge factor as to how this whole thing shakes out. It's one big puzzle. There's the park, there's additional green space, there's cleaning up the dump on Old County Road with just mass amounts of garbage that you guys all see, pillows everywhere. That's not related to the Transit Village, but that's all part of the equation. So, I know you guys were upset about things like noise not being mitigated, all these issues that are gonna affect our neighborhood, this massive amount of noise, this sound wall, that stuff. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about a holistic approach that we want you guys to consider. So, we really, we know it's a tough situation, we know there've been a lot of politics lately, and that may have made all y'all a little reticent to express your viewpoints, but we wanna encourage you to be true to yourselves. Don't let the hype, the external stuff, affect the way you think. And, you know, we're sorry to lose you, Michael. You did a great job, and we don't really understand it, but we're wishing for the best, and we want you guys to be true to yourselves. This is really important for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Is there anybody else here to speak on items not on the listed agenda? Okay. Moving on, we're gonna move on to the approval of the minutes. Do any of the commissioners have any changes or additions to the minutes?
No, I didn't see any changes.
Nope. I don't have any changes either, but I do want to, I do want to talk about the subject of the minutes at the end of the meeting under, under commission reports and comments. Okay? Great. Can I entertain a motion to approve the minutes?
I move it. Go ahead. After you, sir.
Move approval of the minutes.
Second.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Great. Thank you. Minutes approved. Okay. So, I know on the agenda it says we're gonna do a presentation then a study session. I understand now that that is going to be morphed into one presentation/study session. So, I'd like to go ahead and welcome up, am I welcoming Colette or Al? Colette? Would you like to come up?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Colette Mignot. I'm the Contract Project Planner, assisting the city with the entitlement phase of the San Carlos Transit Village. I'm going to do a very brief overview, then the Public Works Director will do a presentation about capital projects that are adjacent to and related to the project site. Then the Legacy and SAM Trans will present, they've got pretty graphics and can much more effectively illustrate how their project has changed with respect to some of the aspects. And then, planning commission questions, public comment, and closing remarks. The one little variation would be that we'd like to have the questions to the Public Works Director taken immediately following his presentation, so he can conclude his participation in the meeting.
That sounds great.
Okay. So, I first just wanna talk about where we are in our overall process. The EIR has been prepared and certified, and we are now beginning the consideration of project merits. The site walk last Thursday and this study session are the beginning phase of that project. The next steps are that the applicant is working to submit a complete submittal, and then we will continue doing analysis and drafting recommendations for a formal presentation to you as part of a public hearing. The project will be two parts. One is the about 10 and 1/2 acre site that's both north and south of Holly. That includes the proposed mixed-use development as well as the reconfigured Caltrain station. There is also another part, which is the rezoning of the lands that extend from Arroyo Avenue between the Caltrain right-of-way and El Camino Real down to the boundaries of the city on the south, and that area is proposed for rezoning by the city. Again, just a very quick overview, the Legacy project includes eight buildings, up to four stories over a parking podium.
Four and 1/2 stories.
That's what I said.
Four and 1/2.
Four stories over a parking podium. Okay? Thank you. 280 residential units, including some which are on the ground floor in Buildings 1 through 6.
Can the record be changed to four and 1/2? That's very important.
Just under 17.
Hold on. She did say over, over a parking podium. I have no problem making, making that change, but let's not have any more shout-outs from the audience. Thank you.
Just under 20,000 square feet of ground-floor commercial space in Buildings 6, 7, and 8, and just under 20,000 square feet of commercial space that would be at the second and third stories. The Caltrain portion of the project site includes the reconfiguration of Caltrain and the multimodal station, landscaping, and a multi-use area that is near Arroyo Avenue. I wanna highlight the changes in the project since the preparation of the EIR and the discussions with the community. There is reductions in the fourth floors of Buildings 1 through 6 by about 34,000 square feet. That both changes the extent as well as the maximum height for those buildings. There is a reduction in ground-floor commercial in Building Number 6 by just over 1,000 square feet. That's the result of moving some of the residential development that was taken off the fourth floor into a portion of that retail space. There is a reduction in unit size by approximately 80 square feet per unit, and there is a change in the unit mix as a result of the change in the configuration of the fourth floor. There will be four more one-bedroom units, one fewer two-bedroom, and three fewer three-bedroom units as a result of the change. There are also changes in the landscaping. As a result of discussions with fire staff, there's been a reconfiguration of the emergency vehicle access, which has increased the area for landscaping and allowed approximately twice as many trees to be in the revised landscaping plan compared with a previous. Attached to your staff report are two tables. One is a summary of the improvement measures, which were identified through the hearing process on the EIR, both by the EIR consultants as well as by planning commissioners. And there is a summary table that identifies how each of those is being addressed. Some of them will be conditions of approval or recommended to you as conditions of approval. In some cases, the applicant is still preparing submittal materials to address those. Some specific measures that I'd like to just comment on, the revised plans show increased landscaping. That's in response to number one, which asked for more landscaping. Improvement measure number four, we have letters from SAM Trans and Caltrain committing to maximizing or maximizing the protection of Old County Road as part of work that may happen in the future as part of electrification. And condition or improvement measure number 14, there is a letter that indicates that there really is not any feasible materials that can be used as an exterior material for sound attenuation. So, we have, just wanted to highlight those specific responses. There is also attached the summary of the mediation issues in a matrix, and those also have had a column that indicates how each of those might be addressed. Again, some of them are identified as being appropriate for conditions of approval. Some will be addressed by actions of public agencies outside of the application, of the project approval process. One of them, the condition number or matrix number three, revised plans do show a reduction in the fourth floors in the maximum building height. And part of what we would hope to get tonight, both from the community and the commission members, is some sense of, has that gone a good way towards meeting that concern or not? And some of the measures that are the mediation issues are still under consideration and discussion. With that, I'd like to turn this over to the Public Works Director, who will provide the summary of the related capital projects.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question before we move on? In the first slide, you actually said the project is sort of split into two parts. One, the project itself, which is Arroyo North, and then the area south of Arroyo is proposed to be rezoned as planned development.
One part is initiated by Legacy and SAM Trans, and one part is initiated by the city. That's why I've identified them as two parts of the project.
Why the choice planned development if everything that we've heard has essentially said that nothing can really be put there? It's not wide enough to really develop. So, if you're talking about making it planned development, and essentially they're saying that nothing can be developed there, why is it being zoned as planned development and not some other zoning choice?
I think I can answer that question, Madam Chair. And the intent of that surrounds the issue of landscaping and maintenance over the years, in the coming years, and we made, we have made it very clear that we want an improvement of that area as tied to this development project. And so, a planned development area would ensure that conditions, future landscaping and maintenance are in place in perpetuity. So, it doesn't necessarily have to do any with development, per se. However, the current zoning would allow for commercial development to occur there if it could fit.
Answering your question.
Okay.
So, a planned development, again, is to protect the city standards and conditions for landscaping and future use of that area.
Because it seems to me like it's sort of an end-around, or in other words, you're saying now that you can't do anything and can't do any development on it, and then you're gonna rezon it as planned development so that down the road you can potentially develop it, okay? But you're saying, essentially it's being told to us right now that, that you can't develop it, okay? And that, that was part of the project, is that they said after Arroyo, it becomes too narrow to develop. So, if on one hand you're saying it's too narrow to develop, and then on the other hand you're essentially saying that we wanna, we wanna preserve it for potential future development, it, it just seems inconsistent to me.
Well, the, the issue of not being developable is a physical constraint as opposed to some other constraint. So, when you heard that it's not developable, that was not developable to move units, single, or residential units down to that area, and we've looked at the width, and so that's what we've been told by the developer and others, is that it's physically not suitable to move units from this development down there to lower the height and density to the north.
But you could potentially move the commercial development down there. It would be potentially suitable for the commercial or retail development, right?
No, not necessarily. Again, it's very narrow, and we did take a look at this very carefully with, during our public hearings with the city council, we looked at the actual developable depth, and it was, I seem to recall, like 20 to 25 feet after setbacks and sidewalks and right-of-way were taken out. So, again, it would be, you know, even for a commercial retail, it would be, I don't even think that could be a potential. It, it could be. It's zoned for it now. Now, the other thing to consider is, you know, it depends on what happens with the right-of-way there. I mean, theoretically, if something, if the berm was changed or more area was suitable for retail development, I mean, sure, it could occur. That's the general plan and the zoning currently allow for that.
And if I could just add, within the area that we're talking about, there are some existing auto dealers right at the southern city boundary. Also, there have been seasonal uses made of those areas. So, those would be the kinds of uses, and then if, if, if that's kind of the envelope of use that ends up being approved through the development plan, if there is somebody who's creative and finds a way to do something else, it would then have to come back through a development plan amendment. So, there would still be an opportunity for community review and community input.
Okay. It just kind of feels like you're saying one thing and doing something else.
It's not the intent.
I know.
Colette, thank you. Jay, can you quickly introduce yourself?
Yes. Good evening, planning commissioners. Jay Walter, Public Works Director.
Thank you.
I was asked to come in tonight to give you a rundown on some of the capital improvement projects that are slated for this area and how they connect or tie into the Transit Village development that will be occurring. So, what I've got is a series of slides to work through with you, and on the screen at this point in time is just an aerial photo of our vicinity of our city, and of course, running from kind of the top-left to the lower-right is the El Camino Railroad, Old County Road corridor, just to orient us for what we're looking at. And so, essentially, the, as we understand that the Transit Village project, as it's proposed, will, will be in the area that's shown kind of by this purple shading. And so, right in the middle, with El Camino on one side, the railroad tracks on the other. So, so one of the things, or some of the things that will be happening with the Transit Village along El Camino Real in the vicinity. This is the intersection of Holly and El Camino Real, and what's shown here are some pedestrian enhancements, some crosswalk enhancements, and some sidewalk enhancements. Also shown is the removal of the left-turn lane from El Camino to go on to Holly Street westbound, which is part of the project, the traffic mitigations for the project, as well as the removal of one of the right-turn lanes from Holly onto, or excuse me, from El Camino onto Holly as you go towards the freeway to the east. So, this'll shorten the pedestrian distance, give a refuge area, and, and really improve this from a pedestrian standpoint. So, that's work that's gonna be done along El Camino. And then, moving a little further south, where the Historic Depot is located, you can see the enhancements that are gonna be made, the intersection of San Carlos Avenue and El Camino Real, with the, the crosswalks and decorative pavement in the middle. The parking area and entrance that currently exists now will be replaced by a plaza area, and so, really enhancing the connection between the San Carlos Avenue block up to Laurel and the downtown. So, a very significant improvement that will be done as part of the project. And then, a little further down at Cherry Street, this is going to be the new entrance to the parking area to the south of the depot. And that main point, there will be a left-turn lane and a traffic signal that will be built at this location, so the, the traffic going in and out of the parking lot that's to the south of the depot area will be able to be facilitated much more easily than if it was just an unsignaled intersection with a break in the median. So, that's work that is planned as part of the Transit Village project on El Camino. And then, the next project to talk about with you, as I've slid in the red-shaded area, that's Old County Road, and essentially what we call the East Side Connect Project. That's a capital improvement project that is $2.8 million grant-funded, and what it's doing is, essentially, here's an example slide of some of the improvements that are gonna be made. This is a location that's just a little bit north of Holly Street, but as you can see from the illustration, Old County Road is gonna be transformed with some, many additional pedestrian enhancements with sidewalk replacement, bulbouts at the intersection corners, and some tree planting, and we're gonna be facilitating bicycle travel along that corridor, Old County Road, from the north city limit to the south city limit. So, that was one of the, the, the real key features of this grant, was to enhance bicycle and pedestrian traffic through the area. And so, that construction is, is gonna be taking place. And you can see it's largely on the east side of Old County Road, because the railroad berm is on this side. And then, looking at the, the spot on Old County Road where East San Carlos Avenue is, and essentially the, the area where the current Caltrain station is, there's pedestrian enhancements and crossings at East San Carlos Avenue. The traffic signal that currently is just a little bit south of this location, it's right in here, is gonna be moved and be essentially reinstalled at East San Carlos Avenue. So, we will be able to facilitate very well bicycle traffic that would be coming through the area under the station and then across to East San Carlos Avenue, which in itself is gonna have kind of a dual use and be encouraged for bicycle travel as you would head east towards the, essentially, if you were gonna go across the freeway at Holly. But we'll, we'll be encouraging cyclists to use East San Carlos Avenue in this particular case. Again, you can see the, the sidewalk improvements as well, and the shuttle bus pickup-dropoff area that's, it's in the current plan, and I know there's still ongoing discussion about that. But also, the area that's currently kind of a bulb-out in front of the Caltrain station is essentially going to be, I should call it a bulb-in right now. That's what's there now. But it's gonna become a bulb-out for, it's gonna shorten the crossing distance, and it's gonna, again, enhance this area from a pedestrian and bicycle field. And then, just a little further south, at the point where Arroyo Avenue comes underneath the train tracks, on the, the Old County roadside, we're gonna be, we're gonna enhance that pedestrian crossing. We're also going to end up with what is a bike left-turn lane for bikes that are gonna go down Commercial Street. And we have, we're using this as creating a focal point for folks to get, if they don't wanna- want to try to go underneath the tracks at Holly, they can come down to this location. They can come through, and then when they turn, they will come. And if they want to head down this way towards where the East San Carlos Avenue bike lane will be going towards industrial, they can do that. Or they can go north or south on Old County Road with enhanced bicycle lane signing and striping markings for the entire length. So that's a key improvement that we're doing. And along with that, we will be undergrounding the utilities in that area and largely focused on that area kind of between commercial and just past Holly Street to the edge of the residential development. We have been working with PG&E on what's called a Rule 28 undergrounding project where the city has an accumulation of what are called credits that are able to be used for paying the costs of undergrounding those utilities. So the, all the overhead wires and poles that are along Old County Road in that vicinity will be removed. The electrical lines, the phone lines and other communication lines will all be put in trenches and conduits in the ground. And that project is going to take place right in the middle of the East Side Connect project. So we've done as much as we can. We're going to be coordinating that work. So you'll see that happening here, and I'll get to the schedule of that in just a few minutes. And then these are some of the features that you'll be seeing on the East Side Connect project. Again, there will be decorative street lighting that will be placed. There will be bike racks. There will be trash enclosures and benches for some of the seating areas, some enhanced bicycle markings, and then some enhanced pavement treatments as well all along that corridor. So some real significant aesthetic enhancements and improvements through there as a lot of that sidewalk and other area is in very bad shape, and it's certainly broken up by the fact that it has all the utility poles currently in place. And the next project to talk about as we slide into the screen, this blue shade, it goes essentially from Bush along El Camino Real down to Arroyo. And what that is, is that's called the El Camino Lighting and Landscape Project. And that was, again, that's been funded by grants. And essentially, if you look at the screen here, this is kind of a split shot of El Camino Real, and you can see some additional trees that are placed at locations that will be all along that stretch. And the idea is to enhance the west side of El Camino, not to be exactly like the east side of El Camino, but essentially with what the grant was able to provide, some significant enhancements along there to kind of mirror that improvement that will occur with the Transit Village project as it goes forward. And again, some of the features of that project, we will have tree grates around the trees that are placed. I'm not sure we can get trees this size immediately planted, but the idea, of course, is they'll grow that tall. They'll be a canopy type tree. And then we have some decorative street lighting and then some benches that will be placed along the way as well. So that's another, that's another capital improvement project that's currently funded that will be moving towards construction later this year. And then one final piece to mention, slides in this light green shade in this area from Arroyo down to just past Britton. You may be familiar with an initiative called the Grand Boulevard Initiative, which is taking place along El Camino Real, essentially from South San Francisco all the way down to San Jose, where there is planning and great vision being developed for what should that boulevard be like? What should it look like? What should it accommodate? And how should we be developing along it? So the city's piece in this particular area, the city was one of four locations along El Camino Real that was chosen to essentially create, to work through the process with Caltrans to create what we call 65% design drawings. That is basically you've worked your way through most of the, you know, what are the widths going to be? What are the medians going to be? What are the side, the areas along the side going to be? And getting Caltrans essentially preliminary approval for that project to move forward. And so we saw an opportunity there with some money that was coming available through the Metropolitan Transportation Commission to apply for one Bay Area grant. And we applied for and we have received approval for funding to complete the design and then build a piece of this in San Carlos. And so the piece that we're going to be building and focusing on has a good connection to the Transit Village as well as our East Side Connect project. This view shows the Arroyo undercrossing, and here's the train tracks, the current bicycle ped undercrossing under the tracks. And what we're developing here is essentially a plaza area on the west side of the berm. And we're developing crosswalk enhancements across El Camino. The current U-turn area that is signalized at that location is, we're going to have the median extended up to the point that U-turn won't be allowed anymore. It didn't serve a real significant purpose, and so we determined we could get rid of it. And the sidewalk, excuse me, the crosswalk areas will be enhanced to facilitate pedestrians and cyclists to get into this area and be able to use the undercrossing to go over to the East Side Connect project, which will be enhanced for bicycles and pedestrians. And then what's not shown on this early diagram is off here on the north portion of this, the parking lot for the Sam, the, excuse me, the Transit Village project will extend down to this point and we will connect up to here. So there'll be, again, a connection to the Transit Village project, a connection underneath the tracks to the East Side Connect project. So we're putting a number of pieces in place, which we really feel will enhance the aesthetics and the place and the feel for bicycles and pedestrians and others who want to just be in that area. So just a couple of points on schedule so far. The East Side Connect project, we bid in February, and we will start construction next month. One of the things that's taken us a couple of months is to get the final arrangements made with PG&E on the credits that are needed for the undergrounding work to proceed. We have an agreement, we're borrowing credits from a couple of other cities, and we have those agreements basically in place now. So the East Side Connect project will start in July, and it's likely the undergrounding project will start probably a month or so, maybe two months after that. And what we'll do is the contractor for the East Side Connect project is going to go in and he's going to begin to do the demolition work. And so the demolition work will be done, so then the undergrounding contractor can come in and place the conduits, do the trench work so that that area can then, we can, it can be ready to accept all the wiring that needs to go down in there. And then the East Side Connect contractor will come back in and he will begin to do all the sidewalk improvements and everything else that's up on top. That way, we're coordinating this work so we're not having to dig up things that were freshly built. And we felt that that few months of delay in starting the East Side Connect was worth it to be able to get that coordination. The, again, the Old County Road undergrounding, again, the bids are opening July 9th, and so we'll know what our prices are then, and we will construct concurrently. The El Camino Landscape and Lighting Project, we will bid in December, and that has to do with some of the requirements for including a project in a federal transportation plan. But our grant is in place, we're ready, with our plans are almost complete, and so we'll be having that, we'll put that under construction in the spring, through the spring and summer of 2014. And then again, as relates to the OABAG grant for that work near the Arroyo undercrossing, funding has been approved, and we have to now arrange with our consultants to get a schedule for completing the design and getting the plans ready for construction. So these are the, essentially, these are some of the CIP projects that are in and around the area as we see them directly connecting to the Transit Village project and kind of working together to enhance the area over the period of time that construction will be taking place. Only a couple of other projects, just to make you aware of, down on Industrial Road in front of the PAMF project, which is currently under construction. We also have an undergrounding project that will take the overhead lines and will put them under the ground and will be serving the properties across the street as well as the PAMF property. And that project is one that's going to start construction here just in the next few weeks. And then Branston Street, which is a little further, it's actually between Commercial and Holly on Old County Road. There is a special project that has been developed with a ABASMA grant to do some stormwater infiltration and some treatment along that street where we're going to be, going to be essentially rebuilding along the sides of that street to help filter some of the stormwater runoff so that instead of just running directly into pipes and then on down to, say, Polgus Creek and then into the waters heading towards the bay, we'll get an opportunity to have, you know, soil and filtration, grass and other kinds of things, take some of the pollutants out of that water and use that water for a secondary purpose, doing some irrigation with it along the way. But what we hope is, it's a demonstration project, is we hope it's something that will be part of the repertoire for stormwater pollution prevention and treatment in the future at other locations. And that's something that we'll be getting under construction. We're going to council in July to advertise, and it'll probably start construction in September. So those are just a couple of others that are in the vicinity. And so that would, that would conclude my presentation on the projects that relate to that, and if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Does anybody have any questions for Jay?
I do.
So do I. Go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead, Scott.
So I know originally as part of the East Side Connect project, they were talking about East San Carlos Avenue. Is that sort of, that's no longer part of this project at all?
Actually, the section of East San Carlos Avenue from Old County to Industrial is part of the project. Essentially, what it's come down to is it will be, it will be enhanced to have sharos on the pavement in order to emphasize it as a bicycle route between East San Carlos Avenue and Industrial, or excuse me, Old County Road and Industrial.
No changes in the sidewalk or anything like that?
I think it's pretty limited. I think it's been, it's more to facilitate the bicycle travel.
Okay. The second question I had is you're talking about funneling the bikes through the train station. And I know that that walkway there can get, on both sides, can get extremely congested with pedestrians. And there's really no area because the sort of the sunken area that the kids use for How are you going to sort of prevent the bicyclists and the pedestrians from running into one another there, especially if you're headed east and you're going to try and get them around that corner over to East San Carlos Avenue? That seems like it's going to be a really easy spot to have lots of accidents.
Well, I would agree, and I think that's the, any physical changes that are done to the area that's under the train tracks aren't part of the East Side Connect project. So at this point, I'm not familiar with what design details would be contemplated by SAM Trans as it relates to that to enhance that area from the opposite side of the intersection on El Camino across through in that plaza area. But my sense is that there would have to be some good marking and/or routing and segregation of bikes and peds in order to avoid that situation.
So is that something we're expecting as part of the Transit Village, as part of the Transit Station project? Who's going to actually take care of that? Or do we, are we just going to assume that it stops once we hit their property and it starts once we get to the other side?
I don't have the answer to that as far as the, who will actually make those physical improvements at this point in time. I don't know the detail.
Okay. And that property is owned by SAM Trans or Joe Powers?
That area is not city property, so.
So that's SAM Trans property. Okay. Thank you.
And if I could add to that, Madam Chair, I think the intent is not to have people ride the bikes, ride bikes across the plaza either, in either direction, east or west, but I think signage to get people off their bikes and to walk their bikes along with pedestrians. So that's the intent, is not to allow people to walk their bikes through. Brian Fitzpatrick is here, and perhaps he could, you know, talk to that a little bit. But I think it's more of a signage and enforcement issue than it is a physical improvement issue.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I know from personal experience that signs don't work there, or there wouldn't be any cigarette butts all over the place and people smoking all over the place. So I'm not sure signage is really going to solve our problem there. So just, just one quick comment there.
And if I could add just to that on top of that, the design of the plaza is also something that would come through the Planning Commission as part of the architectural review of the project, and we'll have the landscape architect available to make physical changes or signage suggestions or landscaping. There's lots of things that could be done from a design standpoint to change the physical environment, to correct certain behaviors or, you know, encourage certain behaviors. So the landscape architect can certainly help with that, and the Planning Commission will have an opportunity to look at the design of the plaza.
Thank you. I was just noticing, is there a sidewalk that actually goes over the culvert down by the Arroyo underpass? So it was right near the end. In fact, it might have been your last slide. So that area along there, is that a sidewalk?
Yes, that's a sidewalk connection across that.
So there is no existing way without going into the street right now. This will allow you to actually get past that culvert along without going out into the street?
That's correct.
Okay. I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Jay, I just have one question. Can you put the first slide up for the Holly-El Camino intersection, please? And forgive me if this is a more appropriate question for the project. I'm happy to ask it later, but since you had mentioned it. There are pedestrian refuges on the El Camino crossings, but I don't see any on the Holly crossing, and I'm wondering if that's something that can be added.
It may be, that's actually, I think, a detail of the Transit Village project and the improvements that they will make, but I think the difficulty would be just the narrowness of this section of the current median. And yet I won't say that it's not impossible to do because we do have some width on this one side over here. So other than this being a depiction of a crosswalk here, it may be possible that that could be accommodated.
I just know that that's an intersection of particular concern, so that's certainly something that I'd like to see, and I know many others would as well. Thank you. Okay, so at this point, Jeff, do we have you come up, or how is the order going here?
Dale?
We would have the architect come up and walk through their presentation.
Planning Commissioners, I'm Sherry Scott with Christiani Johnson Architects. I'm the architect for the project. And so what I'd like to do is walk you through the changes that we've made since the initial submittal. And then there's two major changes that we've made to the architecture and landscaping, and that's to reduce the height of the fourth floor. Both, it reduces the overall building height and also the mass of the fourth floor. And also, we've increased planting on the east side of all the buildings, and that was done with collaborative meeting that we have with the fire department to reduce the amount of emergency vehicle access on the east side. And that really allowed us to increase the planting on the east side of our project. So I'll walk you through those changes as it occurs throughout the site. Run through the first couple of slides here, which are of the transit center. So I think you're all familiar with the project now, but I'll just give you the brief overview and then walk you through the height changes for each project. So starting at the south end of the site, we have the existing depot flanked by the two retail buildings, Buildings 7 and 8. These two buildings have not changed since the initial submittal. But starting with the residential buildings and going north from here, Building 6 up to Building 1, each of these buildings now has a three-story portion and a four-story portion to the project, and the three-story portions of the project have increased on each of those buildings. And this is the portion of the project north of Holly Street, so Buildings 4, 3, 2, and 1. Again, these represent the footprints of each project, of each building. The fourth floor is where the mass has been reduced. In order to reduce the mass of the project on the fourth floor, there's a lot of subtle changes on the ground floor that are not, I would say, arguably not significant, so I'm not going to review those. But it really allowed us to take a lot of the bulk of the fourth floor and distribute it on the lower floors of the building. And actually, I'll take a quick And actually, I'll take a quick pause here. I know there's been a lot of discussion about the, the plaza, and since we have our landscape architect here, I'll have him walk us through the design of the plaza, and then I'll come back to the architecture.
Good evening, I'm Paul Luteri with the Gazardo Partnership Landscape Architects. And we'll just talk briefly about the plaza. We have a few new renderings too that we, that we did. The idea has been simpler all the way along. The idea is to have a multi-use kind of plaza and create much more of a grand space out front that would allow for pedestrian activity, would allow for farmers' markets to happen, would allow for, you know, community program uses to happen out there, as well as the ability to have pedestrians and bicycles actually be able to traverse this, this zone. Whether you want bicycles to walk through the space or ride through the space, there's still a lot of area here that you could, that is unfettered access now where you don't have car conflicts, which is one of the main problems with the space now, is that there's a lot of car conflicts. So everybody's channeled it to much narrower paths of travel. So we have much wider paths of travel that you can, that you can go through. We're, we're keeping the Loquat tree that's out there now that's in the, in the middle that's existing and stays there, and the palms that are flanking the, the building now, we're moving to this spot and sort of creating a terminus to San Carlos Avenue in the foreground. But of course, it's, it's quite tall, so it's a sort of a landmark spot, so you can kind of spot, spot where the plaza is from El Camino and also from San Carlos Avenue, even from this, even from the train as you pull into the station. The sort of yellowish, you know, boxes here are sort of seat height kind of plinths that you can, you can sit on those if you want to. They also allow us to pick up the little bit of grade change there is in the plaza, so the plaza space can feel relatively flat, because we can pick the grade up at those, at those areas. There's, there's also the reddish kind of areas is indicative of space that's up next to the buildings, and we're hoping that those will be used for restaurants, exterior space restaurants. If not, it's still part of public retail walking space, and that occurs on both the north and south, south sides, and even the south side over here, which is not in that, in the plaza specifically. I don't know how we get to there, just to click for the next slide? Okay. So we looked at, we delineated the, the plaza a little bit in, in 3D, just to kind of get a sense for maybe a farmer's market's out there. So the tents that are shown here are not permanent structures, that's the idea, those will have been brought in with, with a, with a farmer's market. Then the furnishings, again, that's the sense that that might be restaurant space that's there, a little bit of a sense for how these plinths could be used and how they'd feel, how the central fountain might, might work in terms of its character. A low body of water with some water movement in it that's kind of on the axis of the, of the depot building, and the palms, you know, stylized a little bit from what they actually look like, but fairly close to their, their height and, and scale. You just get a sense for it being animated and so much different than how it feels now where it's, you know, asphalt wonderland and mostly cars. So another view, this is looking south, same farmer's market day, with, you know, a sort of moderate amount of activity happening in it if that was, if that kind of use was occurring. So just give you a sense of the character of it. And here's looking, looking north now, right out of the sidewalk on El Camino, looking back through the space. I think we have one without the farmer's market too, so that you can actually, did I go backwards? No, I guess not. Oops, sorry. Well, how about last viewed? There we go. Well, there is a rendering somewhere without it, but obviously it's a, you know, it's a, it's a temporary kind of use, so we wanted to get, for you to get a sense for how it could feel with people actually using it, because we've, we've had a lot of planned views of it in the past, and, and those show furnishings and temporary kinds of uses in it as well. But we don't anticipate anything, any permanent objects in, in this space, you know, with the fountain and the plinths around the edges, but the center of it is paving pattern and the ability to walk through it and to be able to have, be able to use it for all sorts of things. So that's kind of the intent. So I think it's time for you to come back.
So these slides you've probably seen before, but just talking about the, the character of the, the buildings, particularly the retail buildings flanking the historic depot, the buildings that were used for inspiration were the depot itself and also the Drake Building across the street. So while we aren't copying this architecture, I think we've drawn a lot of inspirations from this, and the scale of the buildings scaled down and away from the depot out of respect to the historic depot that's there. The other project that was sort of highlighted for inspiration, and is, is really a similar project in terms of height, is the Pacific Hacienda, which is a three and four-story residential building with similar style architecture, has the sort of mission-style architecture. And I think that this is a successful project with a lot of similar elements. It has the courtyards, various reforms, three to four stories, and so there's some similarities with Pacific Hacienda in our project as well. So again, the major change is reduction in math, mass of the fourth floor, which is 34,000 square feet smaller than it was previously. It's the equivalent of removing about 34 apartments from the fourth floor. Again, we haven't lost 34 apartments in the project because we've redistributed those, but those, that's how much has been taken from the fourth floor and been redistributed. Also, the increased tree planting on the east side, which was quite a little juggling match, but we've, I think we've got it figured out. Okay, so just highlighting the reduction mass of the fourth floor for each building, at the top of each slide is the previous submittal, and at the bottom of the slide is what we're proposing now. So at the top of the slide, you'll see, this is Building 1, the farthest north residential building, and everything except for this one slot right here was at four stories. Now what we're proposing is the entire building facade facing the east side here, the units have been removed on the fourth floor. The middle of the building here is at four stories, and then facing El Camino, we've also reduced the height down to three at the corners here. So you can just see visually the reduction in mass, it's about 9,500 square feet or about 45% smaller than it was in the initial submittal. And this is what it essentially looks like in the facade. So the previous facade was at the red dash line here, so the facade facing the east side now, you can see here, is, is about 10 feet lower. Again, facing El Camino, it steps down to three stories as well, four stories is beyond. But previously, the four stories was all the way to the street. Buildings 2 and 3, at the top of the slide is the previous submittal. The lower slide is the, is what we're proposing now. So Building 2, you can see the fourth store, story that's remaining is just this portion here. The entire east side has been reduced to three floors, and then this view corridor through here, this is where the courtyard is, but flanking both sides of this, the project has been taken down to three stories. So the buildings go from three stories, scale up to four stories in the middle, and then back down to three stories at the end. Similar with Building 3, three stories, four stories in the middle, and then down to three stories at the end. Building 2 is 50% smaller on the fourth floor. Building 3 is 23% smaller on the fourth floor. And again, this is what this looks like. Building 2, this was the previous building facade that was facing the east side here, and so it's, again, mostly 10 feet lower, except for this one portion here in the center that was already low. But this was the only portion of Building 2 previously that was lower than four stories. And now the entire east side is at three. Facing El Camino, we're stepping down on the ends of the building and staying at four stories in the center. Similar with Building 3, we're staying at four stories in the center, stepping down to three stories on each end. And that's similar treatment on the east side and on the west side. Building 4, Building 4 has been reduced, but not as significantly as some of the other buildings. In conversations with the east side neighbors, because this is opposite the 7-Eleven on the east side, this was an area that we felt that we could keep more of the four-story portion. So we've reduced this by 24%, but there is still some four-story portion, you know, facing the east side here. We've reduced the height on the east, or on the north and south of this to three stories. On the south end, this is the portion that faces Holly Street, and so there's, viewed from Holly, this will be a significant change, taking the, the building from four stories down to three, because previously, at the corner of Holly Street, we had not only four stories, but we were actually a little bit higher than that, because we had a tower element on both the north and south side of Holly, and that's been taken down. So that's really about a 15-foot height change at that location. So again, you can see at the ends of the building, taking it down to three stories, scaling up to four stories in the center. Buildings 5 and 6, these are south of Holly Street. We can see here, similar treatment that we just discussed on Building 4. Facing Holly Street, we've taken the building down to three to get rid of the tower, the same tower that was on Building 4. And then on Building 6 here, you can see that we reduced the amount of four stories on Building 6 as well. So Building 5 is 18% smaller, Building 6 is 47% smaller on the fourth floor. Again, this is what this looks like in elevation. This is the tower at Holly Street, which is a 15-foot height change. The other areas would just be one-story height change, which is about 10 feet height difference in the other areas. Just a couple of views, quick views. I have some animations that I'll show a little bit later that I think show the character a little bit better, but these are just some still shots. So this is looking down El Camino. The foreground is existing trees in El Camino. The trees in the background are mature street trees that would be planted, not, they wouldn't be planted mature, but they will eventually reach this at their maturity in the background This is a view from the east side from Montgomery Street. This is looking at the retail building 8. This is the most southern end of the proposed development here. This is a view from the east side from Sylvan. And you can see that the Building 2 here is, this is the, the three-story portion, and you can see just behind it, this is the four-story portion, but this is, I think, is a good angle to show how, when you move the four-story portion of the building back from the face of the building, it's a, it's a gradual transition versus having the entire fourth floor right at the east side. So this is sloping from three stories up to four here, and this is all three stories. This is a view from Inverness. Again, you can see the three-story portion here and the four-story tucked behind here.
I'm sorry, what building number is that?
Uh, this is also Building 2. So you're looking kind of a little bit south at Building 2. So this is the, sorry, this mouse isn't cooperating here. So this, this line here is, is three stories all along the, the east side.
And I'm sorry, Sherri, can you go back to the previous slide real quick?
I think I can, let's see.
Sorry, so, and then just to clarify, that's Building 3 over there on?
So this is Building 3.
Okay.
So this goes from three stories to four stories in the center, and then back down to three again. You can't see behind this tree.
I see.
But this, this portion here is the four-story portion.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so this is Building 2 from Inverness, and this is Building 1 from, from Riverton looking towards the hill. So this is the northernmost extent of the project. I think at this point, I'll have Paul come back and explain a little bit more about our tree planting on the east side.
All right. As when we talked about this previously in some of the community meetings, I can go through this in as little or as much detail as you'd like to hear, but basically, I, I think what was most effective was, the basic philosophy was to use as many vertical and upright trees as we can and mix in some trees that have, have a little bit broader canopies where there's places we can do it. There's a fair amount of complexity in the shape of what's available and planned as you go down through it. So we also have to make sure that bedroom windows stay avail, stay available for fire rescue and things like that. But those criteria really didn't get too much in the way of the ability to really add a lot of trees to the space once the EVA aspect of it was, was altered a bit. So you just get a sense, and the trees are ghosted in, you know, fairly gently here actually, so we're not sort of overstating the case, but obviously, these trees would have more density than this. And also, none of these elevations show the, the railroad berm in the foreground, which actually, you know, takes out maybe about from here down in terms of what you can actually see. So the important part, we've always felt, is the upper floors and how those are, how those are screened and how the facade is broken up by the tree planting. So we have a lot of variety in, in, in scale and form, and I think we've talked about this before. People have asked, you know, how far in the future is this, just 100 years from now? And generally, no. So the, the heights of these trees will, in terms of quote-unquote, and not really maturity so much as maturation for the purpose of screening, some of them will continue to grow further, is somewhere seven years, some of them maybe five to 15 years. It's kind, that's kind of the zone of what you're seeing here. And as I think I've said this on our, some of the sidewalks too, it's hard to predict exactly how fast trees will grow. So it's based on, you know, your best opinion and these trees being well cared for, which our experience on Legacy's projects, the trees are well cared for, and they do get, we do get sort of the optimal kind of growth out of them. Some of the examples of just how much the redwoods have grown since the, that are out there now, since the project started, a significant difference in height from six or seven years ago. So these go, these go through each building at a time, and I can just sort of give you a sense for, you get a sense for the, the different scales of trees that are in here, and we can kind of go through, go to Building 2. We've also got some lower, narrower, they're juniper varieties that grow similar to Italian cypress, but not quite as big. We've talked about those before. And then there's a, a good, a good quantity of consistent canopy trees that run across this edge, and we've also picked up the, the narrow upright trees again on this side. And then this is the El Camino frontage. Each one of these slides is the same, the railroad side and the El Camino side. And that's mostly delineating the street trees in the foreground, and then in some places, there are backup trees that happen. Usually those are evergreens, smaller-scale trees in smaller-scale spaces. And then the other detail that's not related to tree planting is that there is other landscape happening besides the trees, but the big conversation really is about how, how the trees break down the scale of the buildings. And we think it does it quite effectively on the, on the east side on this, on this one, and then on the El Camino side where we have street trees. So Building 4, we've got a good, a good mass, we have a good amount of room here, so we can have wider-spreading canopy trees here that'll give us a bit more, a little more mass actually, and, and with fewer trees, and then the narrower, more upright ones in the narrower spaces, and also to help break down the scale. I think I've talked before that part of the rationale is to, you can't just block out the whole building for various reasons, you know, fire access and also just desirability, but it's important to us to break the scale down. So the scale, you know, Sherri's talked about the scale from how many, how the floors have been removed, but we're also breaking the scale down because there's, there's massing of planting happening in front of it that breaks down the facade that you see. And that actually shows up a bit in those, in the photo simulations from looking from the east side neighborhood back over at some of the existing trees that are there, how they break the scale of the building down. And we think that's really important to how you perceive it. So that was part of the rationale. Want me to go through the sections as well? Okay. Okay, yeah, we'll go through the sections quickly. I mean, these, these are, I think you can probably see, El Camino on the left, and train, and then the various conditions that happen. And there's quite a variety of conditions that happen, both in width of berm and slope and retaining wall conditions. But you can get a sense for how the tree planting works, that you were seeing in elevation in the previous drawings and how it looks in, from the side. So just read along, as it were, in terms of the, the building spaces. And here we've got trees that are in the foreground of the section and trees in the background of the section. And here we have the existing poplars that we've, we saw when we were out there, and the existing redwoods. And then we're back to the plaza now.
Thank you.
Okay, so what I'd like to do now is show you a few animations that we've done since the previous submittal, and, because I think that helps, seeing the still images, it's harder to describe the ins and outs of the buildings. And so since then, what we've done is we've rendered some animations. And so the first one that I'll walk you through is an overview of the, the depot plaza.
And just to clarify, Sherri, the parts that are green are not actually green?
Yeah, I should explain. So, so we've done a lot of modeling in SketchUp, but we haven't modeled the whole world, and topography is, is fairly tricky in, in SketchUp. So this green sort of carpet is just the default background.
Okay.
And so there's gonna be some green in areas that just haven't been modeled yet. The plaza particularly, I'll, I'll point out, there's some topography through here, and so what you're seeing, the plaza actually does extend out to the curb, but because of the, the slope, it's being covered a little bit by that carpet. So that's a, that's a graphic thing, but the plaza actually does extend all the way out to the curb. So this is retail Building 8, existing depot, obviously, retail Building 7, and then the residential project that starts just to the north there. And this is actually a good viewpoint to show some of the, the terracing that happens on, on the office buildings and the retail buildings here, going from a one-story terrace here. This would be used by the office users for, you know, go out for a break or lunch, what have you. Similar happens on, on the plaza side that we'll see when we spin around. Also, on Building 7, you can see there's a significant sort of terrace or loggia here, so people can really enjoy the plaza from the office as well. This is the same for farmer's market day, by the way. So the tents, again, are one version of how the plaza might be used.
I had a quick question about that, because I remember last fall when we were discussing this plaza area, and, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought we were told that- this plaza area, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought we were told essentially, this isn't going to really be available for any sort of events because there really isn't enough room. I mean, clearly, the canopies that you have here, there's no way that our Farmer's Market in its current size would ever fit there with people.
Sure. It's, I mean, the event would have to be scaled to the plaza, but I think it's definitely big enough to hold an event of a Farmer's Market of this scale. There's various-sized Farmer's Market. I know in San Francisco, they'll have a Farmer's Market that has two tents, but it's, it would be an event that would be scaled for the plaza, but I think it would easily accommodate a Farmer's Market.
I'm just trying to envision any of the events that we have here in town couldn't possibly fit in that small space. And I know it could be like an extension of it, but, I don't know. I just, like I said, I just remembered that wording, this isn't going to be, you know, for concerts and, you know, this and that. It's really big enough for people to kind of navigate around and maybe sit and have lunch and that kind of stuff, but.
Well, I think it's bigger than just a place to have lunch. I mean, there's definitely room to stage, I mean, essentially, the Farmer's Market that we have shown here as an example, but it may not be as big as some of the others that you have around, but.
So a very small event.
Just as an example of some of the things that are possible, you know, a food truck could pull into the space if we wanted to, if that's something that was desirable and you wanted to have that happen, or somebody with a smaller scale, you know, food service that was, you know, pulled in on the back of a vehicle. It's possible to do that sort of thing. It's not so much that you would transplant an existing big, big event that happens in San Carlos and try to stuff it into that space. I mean, it's sort of space-appropriate. So there's opportunities to do things in it. It's not going to just be a direct transplant. So we just wanted to get it, the reason why we did the rendering is to show the kind of scale of activities that could happen in the space and still have plenty of room for people to walk around in. You know, concerts wouldn't be on the list, I don't think, unless it was, you know, three guys on a guitar could do it, you know, but.
Right. No. That sounds, I think, I think that's clear.
Sheri?
Yes?
I'm still trying to figure out how you're going to funnel bicycles and pedestrians through this area and underneath the tracks, and how you're going to stop the bicyclists.
Yeah.
So those little.
I actually think it's less of a funnel probably now than it.
Yeah, but there's, when you go underneath the railroad tracks, okay, there is a very limited, it's six, maybe eight feet wide, and there's pedestrians going in both directions. And if we're going to try and funnel, as Jay said, pedestrians and bicyclists under there, they all come to a very small space in a very short amount of time, including where you've got your Farmer's Market all set up. That's going to be a problem. How do you stop the bicyclists and get them off their bikes? There's nothing that I've seen here whatsoever that suggests that you're going to get the bicyclists, you know, you don't right now.
Yeah, but in fairness, I don't know that there's a reason to get off your bike now because this is all just, it's just all paved.
Yeah.
Right? So you would, if I were riding my bike and I'm a cyclist, too, I would ride till I hit the curb, and then I would start walking my bike. And I know some people don't do that, and that's an enforcement thing, but I would say that the condition that we have now with the depot building and the underpass is the same condition that exists now. The improvement that we're going to be making is the approach to that. And so this actually provides considerably more space for bikes and pedestrians to interact safely than the small strip of sidewalk that is in front of the depot building now.
But we're now going to, this is going to be the preferred alternative for getting bikes east-west, okay?
Right.
Whereas now, now it isn't, okay? And so if we're actually going to encourage bicyclists to use this, how are we actually going to do that? If we got five times as many bicyclists going through there as we do right now, that creates a huge problem in that very small space. So that's what I'm trying to get at, is how are we going to, how are we going to solve that? Because it has to be solved before it gets to the tracks on either side.
Would that be an appropriate question for Samtrans? Would you like them to come up now?
Love to hear Brian's thoughts on it.
So let me, and help me, Commissioner Marsters, if I don't understand your question absolutely correctly, but it seems like we've got sort of two things going on right here, right? We're going to be taking an area right now where you've got cars and trucks and shuttles and buses that are competing with bicycles and pedestrians. And part of the benefit of this project is, we're going to be completely separating all the motorized vehicles from all of the other vehicles. So we're going to be doing that. So that's going to help make it a safer, you know, area for the bicyclists. Secondly, we're going to have an active plaza. So in an active plaza, we're either going to need to designate areas where bicycles will be and where the activities on the plaza will occur. That's likely what's going to need to happen. And then as to the portion of the property that's going to be controlled by Caltrain, which is the area that's underneath that station, we have an entire police force. We contract with the county sheriff to monitor Caltrain stations and Caltrain property all up and down the right of way. We have a police force that operates out of our office, and they are there to enforce everything from parking to other acts that happen on the site. And obviously, with a large right-of-way and a distinct number of police officers, we focus on the areas where we need to see things happen. So if it turns out that we're bringing, let's say, five times the number of bicyclists to this area, and that is going to be likely an area where you're going to walk your bike through, if there are issues there, we have the ability to enforce and to ticket and to do those other things there, just as the city of San Carlos can do that on public streets and other areas. So I think that by the time we use the design that people like Paul and Sheri are going to bring to this, it's going to help us create this pedestrian and bike-only area, and then if there's need for enforcement to make sure that that happens so that we've got a safe environment for the pedestrians interacting with the bicyclists, we bring that to the table. Is that hitting what you?
That answers part of my question, but also brings up another question that I have. The issue is really that space in underneath the tracks, okay? And that's a very finite space, okay? The bicyclists and the pedestrians don't go down into that sort of sunken area. That essentially remains almost completely empty as far as I can see. So you're still going to funnel more people into, in that same small area. And so I have yet to hear how we're going to separate the bicyclists from the pedestrians underneath there.
So are you requesting a design change for that portion?
I, it doesn't, it requires an answer, okay? And not just saying that they're already there, or they're going to be there.
Can I have Paul answer on the design? And I think I've answered on the other end.
The area under the tracks isn't actually part of the scope, but getting to it, you know, the similar things are done in trails all the time, where you get to a trail and you can't, it's the equivalent of motorcycle barriers you've seen where you have to go around them. We have to be careful about how much of that you do because it would coincide with, you know, stopping pedestrians from walking through. If you make a space where you can't ride straight through, right now, you can ride straight through if you want to, and if there's people there, you know, that's too bad. But you can set that up so that there's a way for you to have to ride around an object, which is much more difficult and much less likely to happen when there's people there. You know, you're getting to how to influence people's behavior by design. There are things you can do up to a point, but you know that people will do whatever they want, no matter what you do.
Right.
So we want to make it so that sort of the logical, rational person would come up to that point and say, well, riding around that and making a really tight turn isn't going to happen on my bike, I'm going to get off. And I'm going to, you know, there may be signage that asks you to do that, but then what's in front of you, it could be bollards that do that, that are a bit too close together to ride comfortably through. It could be a series that do that. We have to, we can look at that. And I think that's something that would not completely solve that problem, but I think it would go a long way towards influencing people to get off their bikes and walk through that space.
Thank you. That's what I was looking for, a solution to the problem. The second thing that.
World hunger, I can't do anything with.
That's fine. I was looking for, what can you do in your space to help that? And that may be something that needs to be done on the Old County roadside also, as far as, you know, how do you, how do you prevent people from riding straight through or, you know, so that you have the safety of the pedestrians and the bicycles and bicyclists in mind at the same time? As far as what Brian said about the Samtrans police, I have seen them five times in the 20 years I've taken Caltrain, and every single time it is because somebody has been thrown off of a Caltrain train. So I don't expect that we have high hopes that they're going to be enforcing anything in our, in our city. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
So a design solution would be better.
Yes.
Thank you, Sheri.
Sure. So I'll just get back to the animations here. So that's the overview of the plaza. So we will go on the west side of the project from El Camino Real, down to Holly Street, and then, well, there's a continuation of this that goes from Holly down to the plaza.
So I'm sorry, that's Holly right there?
Yeah, this is Holly Street here.
Thank you.
This is El Camino. So this is building four, five, and six. The depot and the plaza are in the background here. I'll just pause this here just for a second before we pan around, but this is the corner, similar on building four on the other side, where there previously was a tower, and this had been brought down to three stories with the four stories behind. Because this is still a significant corner, we've given a little bit more detail to this corner and enhanced it with some of the stone treatment that we have on the retail buildings. So even though it's not a tower, it's still a prominent corner, and so it's got a little bit of extra detail here. Just wanted to point that out. And then continuing down from Holly Street. And this rendering is from the Old County Road in Springfield, going up to Holly Street. So I'll pause this here. This is building four. This is the three-story portion of building four, stepping up to four stories, and so that's the height difference that you'll see typically from three to four stories. And again, on building, building five, this is the three-story portion stepping up to four as you come towards Holly Street. And similarly, on building four, this is a three-story portion of the building here. This final rendering is just highlighting more of the detail on the retail buildings, So again, you can see some of the terracing of the corner two-story tower, the single-story terrace, stepping up to the three stories here, logges. And these logges and terraces are on the east side as well as the west side. So you will see as we come around the building here that the detailing is similar on both sides of the project here. Nice south-facing terraces here. Again, the same terrace and loggia feature on the east side. And that's building eight. Do you have any architectural questions for me at this point?
Does anybody have any architectural questions for Sheri at this point?
Do you have any of this rendering from building one, two, and three?
We don't have any looking north at this time, but we can, now that we have the model, we can set up more animations for future, future meetings.
Yeah, I'm interested to see that.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Sheri at this point?
Not yet.
No? Okay. Sheri, I have one, one question. Well, actually, two. Buildings four, five, and six seem flatter to me. Am I, is that just an optical illusion, or they seem like they have less visual depth, less interest? Am I just seeing that wrong, or is that actually correct?
The buildings are fairly similar in that they're, they're all based around courtyards that face El Camino.
Okay.
Let me.
And maybe I just need more time with the 3D visuals to really get a sense of it.
Sure.
It's just kind of my first reaction.
And what we can do is, we can develop more animations, you know, for future, for future meetings as well, because I think it does help to see it in 3D instead of the flat drawings.
Right.
But you can see that the site does narrow as you go from north to south, so the depth of the site is one factor that you're probably reading, right? So that's just the physical characteristic of the site. So you actually have more depth to deal with on building one by the time we get down to building four. But you can see that they're all similarly laid out with courtyards that provide quite a bit of relief, and it's a similar treatment along. But there is actually less depth as you, as you head south. So the site plan south of Holly, you can see buildings five and building six. The courtyards do get shallower.
Okay.
But they're all about the same width as you go down from north to south.
I see. Okay. Thank you. Now, forgive me, is this, is Sheri's presentation the end of the study session at this point?
Yeah, that's the end of the formal presentations.
Great, thank you. And then I have a, I have a process question that hopefully you guys can help me out with. Would this be a point for the commissioners to ask any general questions? I know we didn't, for example, pull Paul back up here for additional landscaping questions before we open it for public comment?
Certainly.
Okay, great. Do any of the commissioners have any other additional questions as far as architecture, landscaping, things of that nature? Clarification questions before we open it for public comment?
I just, I know it was brought up a couple of times during the site tour, building number three. I guess it's the fourth floor. What's the massing there? I mean, what, how many units? We can maybe go back to that real quick and.
So this is, this is building three here, and I'll go to, I think the elevation will show the massing east side and west side, so I'm going to flip down to the elevations which we have. Actually, the plan, we'll stop here as well. So this is, sorry, this is the previous building three, and this is the new building three. So essentially, what we have, north is to your left, south is roughly to your right, east is at the top, and west is at the bottom of the page. So the north and south ends of the building are three stories. The middle of the building, both facing east and west, is four stories. And so what that will look like here is you have the break between buildings two and three, which is a courtyard, stepping up to three stories and then up to four. three, which is a courtyard, stepping up to three stories and then up to four. So the height of the building is in the middle, but it's in the middle facing both east and west. So there is a four-story portion that faces the east side as well as the west side here. So similarly, three stories up to four, and then down to three again. So there's six units? There's six units on the fourth floor.
And they're the larger of the units, right? I think if I read that right. They're the two and three bedrooms?
Yes.
How many, did you say, six or five? Five?
Actually, I think it was, oh, it's five. It is five. Right, because these are three bedrooms now. Correct. So the whole building is two and three bedroom units.
Yeah, just if you could maybe do a rendering of that for the next time, that'd be great to see.
Sure, sure. And that was the, I'll go back to the, there's a still shot of it. It's not animated, but I'll show you the still shot of that, which is this one.
Yeah.
So this is where you can see the three-story portion and the four-story portion in the
Any other questions for Sheri or for Paul at this point?
I have a couple.
Go ahead, Scott.
Okay, so I do have a little bit of an issue with the four stories on building three. It's really three units that you've managed to remove pretty much everything else down to three stories except on building three and that small area there. So 277 versus 280 units. I look at that and go, that might be an easy compromise to, you know, address some height. Another concern that I have is the fourth floor, the third floor of building eight. And this sort of gets into a little bit of the landscaping. And so can you go back to your first slide? So can you tell me how many trees that are around, that are on the east side of building eight are guaranteed by the project?
There's three.
Three. So if the city, five years down the road, has an entire new city council, and they decide they don't like the trees on Old County Road, and they get rid of them, and high-speed rail or the electrification project comes along and says, "We don't have any, we want to get rid of all of these trees." There's really three trees, and of those, one of them actually is in front of the building.
Actually, this is, there has been an update to this. It isn't reflected in this slide, and maybe I can have Paul talk about it. It is three trees. There's a lot of competing uses in this area. We have bike lockers and then the circulation path here. There's a lot of underground utilities in this location, including a fiber optic line. But these trees actually have been redistributed, so they are in front of the building.
Okay.
So we shifted the lockers down and put the trees in front of the building.
That's something that I have a real problem with, is the amount of trees that are really guaranteed by this project versus the ones that they're willing to pay for somewhere else that aren't guaranteed. So I'm sort of looking for either the city to somehow guarantee the trees on Old County Road. The Joint Powers Board, since they seem to be the ones who control the Caltrain region, what agreements are going to be for trees along that region there, as well as anything on Samtrans property? Because what I, worst-case scenario, and unfortunately, we've got to look at worst-case scenario as to what's going to happen here. I really hope it never does. But if you look at a worst-case scenario, in a lot of these buildings, you don't really have that many trees in front of them, okay, that are guaranteed.
Sure. And let me just back up to the site plan, because I would like to highlight what we have done to improve planting here.
Right.
And again, maybe Paul can highlight this. But essentially, the row of trees that you see on the east side here didn't exist in the previous submental at all.
Yeah.
And so...
Which left us with essentially no guaranteed trees. So now you're getting to a point where you have some guaranteed trees.
Exactly, exactly. And that's why we worked to get these in here.
And I think that it's a good start, but I think that there needs to be more in the way of guaranteed trees. And I know. And I'm looking at that whole 15 feet that are sitting, that's sitting there, and I'm saying, why can't you put trees on both sides of that 15 feet?
Utilities.
So there's utilities there that cover everything there.
And access to the tracks.
So that there's no way you can put any trees on the other side of it.
Correct.
And there's no way to put those utilities in the center of that 15 feet.
We've already, well...
The utilities that can be moved are being moved out of the way. There's some sewer lines, storm drain lines, those are being moved. Fiber optic line, MCI line, you know, those are big deal utilities that are not really movable. And those are things you can't plant near. And those are the main constraint for the trees on the other side. Also, there's a need for access to the train line itself from this EVA area. But mainly, it's the utilities that prevent there being trees out from the building as you're seeing here. But I think that the only, the one statement is that we think we have a lot of guaranteed trees in the project, particularly in this drawing. The one where you started at building eight, I won't argue with you there, there's three on the plan. And Sheri, she's correct, they have been redistributed. And I wouldn't rule out the idea that we could look at, you know, seeing if we can do anything more there. I don't know if we can.
And that's what I'm saying, is keep going.
No, I understand. Well, look, the whole thing that's happened, you know, I think it's great that Sheri's brought it up. We had zero in this here. And now we have a lot more than zero, and we're happy about that. We want the trees there. So moving the utilities is not a small thing, and it's something that's been done. You know, there's a relationship, how many bike lockers are there there? You know, where they go exactly? If you take out, if you move two bike lockers, you can put a tree between if there's no utility there. And the utility is also, it's hard to see it in these plans, because they're not just, they don't parallel anything. They are, they go like this, and they go like that. They wander all over the place, from one place to another. They're not in the exact same spot. So we have, we've spent a fair amount of time on it, and I think we've maxed this out minus onsite. But it's not necessarily true of building eight, so we can look at that.
Okay.
I have some landscape questions as well, unless you're, if you're not finished. So just a couple of quick things. When we were on the site visit, there was some mention of, I guess, pines being able to be put in near Montgomery Street on the east side of the building. Did I hear that right? Am I understanding, or, you know, I'm sorry, that was the berm. That's a Samtrans question, isn't it?
Wasn't, I don't think we talked about pines at all.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Redwood trees, perhaps, yeah.
There was a request by the neighborhood.
Yes.
At least someone that we...
To plant more redwoods on the berm.
To put more redwoods in the...
Yes.
Right, okay.
And we're pursuing tree planting on the berm with the Joint Powers and the electrification folks, and they're evaluating. It's in process.
It is in process, okay.
In terms of what might happen, when, how that shakes out, I don't know yet. But our intention is to get as many trees between, in all those spaces as we can, with all the various constraints that are involved. And whatever kinds of trees we can get to work. We can't do redwoods, we can do something else, maybe. So that's where we are right now.
And will, can I interrupt for just a second? And will those actually be agreements that are put in place saying that those trees will stay there unless something like high-speed rail comes along? So here's the concern. Here's the concern that I have. You can say anything that we're going to put trees in, and after the project's built, you can say, you know, "We don't like the trees, and we're going to cut them down."
No, we're not, well...
And so that's my concern.
Good concern. I think that's probably a Brian question to answer.
Can I go first? Yeah, you can go first.
Go ahead, Jeff. Come on up.
So all the renderings you've seen, with the one exception being at building eight, where the large existing trees are in place, are only depicted with the trees that are on our property. So all of this that you've seen has been on that focus. So all of those are guaranteed. You did highlight that something could happen someday, and the city could decide to take down the trees they put on the berm that are there, or somebody could. But everything else that you've seen in all of these presentations only depicts those trees. Now, certainly, it depicts a variety of trees that exist over on the east side, but as far as the berm, we haven't really depicted any of the trees on the berm to any large degree. And like Paul said, and Brian's going to speak too, we would like to supplement that, but all we'll ever be able to do is guarantee that what we put on our property remains.
Okay. That's my point.
So I'd like to provide some context for how this whole thing fits together. There had been a request for what's been described as four levels of trees, right? Starting on the east side and moving west, as I understand, the four levels of trees would be Old County Road, the two sides of the berm, and then on the project itself. So when Jeff's talking about in the project itself, that's within the property that Samtrans is leasing to Legacy, that will be part of that development property. So all the trees that you see there are within that development property. Okay? Now, the berm itself, the railroad berm, is not owned by Samtrans, and it's not leased to Legacy, and it's not under control of Samtrans. It's under control of the Peninsula Quarter Joint Powers Board. Now, the Peninsula Joint Powers Board is an entity that's made up of Samtrans, Santa Clara Valley Transportation, VTA, and San Francisco County SFMTA, San Francisco Transit Agency. So it's a completely separate entity from Samtrans and from the applicant on this project. So it's putting trees on another entity's property. JPB is looking into putting trees on the berm. And a goal that the JPB shares with the city is that any trees that are put in the berm need to be compatible with the future electrification of the rail. So the idea is that when electrification comes, you don't want to put up trees today, like Commissioner Marister has said, and take them out.
Right.
So we share that goal.
Okay.
And the idea right now is looking at what's going to be required of electrification, making that overlaid upon what landscaping Legacy would like to put in, and we're trying to find as much landscaping that can go in there as possible. And then JPB would enter into an agreement with Legacy that would allow that landscaping to put in. Then there's one other caveat that's important to note, which is, while we think of these tracks as straight up and down through the peninsula, there's a slight curvature through the property, particularly in San Carlos. There is, at the north end of the site, there's a signal tower on the site. Train engineer needs to have a direct line of sight to that signal tower in order to operate the train safely. We put up story trees about four years ago. Those are demonstrations of what trees might look like to determine where trees shouldn't be placed because they would impact that line of sight. So it's our goal that the two caveats that would dictate where there couldn't be any trees would be trees that would be removed by electrification and trees that would be in that line of sight. And right now, JPB is working with Legacy to figure out the most trees that can go on the site within those parameters.
On the berm.
On the berm.
On the berm.
Yeah.
Okay.
And would there be a maintenance agreement in place for those trees?
Absolutely. There will be, the agreement will state, you know, that the trees can be put up, the requirements for putting up the trees are requiring for maintaining them, yes.
And we will have that before...
Before project approval?
Before project approval.
I can't tell you it'd be before project approval. JPB's not going to let any trees go up there until we have such an agreement before any trees are put up.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for Sheri or anything before we get to public comment?
I, yeah, I have a bunch of miscellaneous things here that sort of don't necessarily fall under the massing and appearance. I read through the mitigation measures, and I see that one of the things that was mentioned was that the noise-absorbing architecture or panels do not exist. So my question put forward at this point is that what alternatives are you considering to address noise, since this is a concern that was expressed by both the planning commission and the city council, that there was an issue with noise? So there's been all kinds of suggestions for ways to address noise, and I haven't seen anything that suggests that you're doing anything to really address noise.
Sure. Would you like a response? Sure. The very first thing we did is lowering the mass and height of the buildings facing that direction. So the elimination, pardon, the elimination of all those units on the fourth floor facing that massively reduced the amount of building that was there that could potentially reflect. So that's number one. Number two, all of the trees that you see that have been introduced in between didn't exist before. And that was one of the things that the sound consultant talked about, is adding landscaping. So, and because those trees exist on that side, one of the benefits is whatever sound, noise, waves come from the train, come and have to penetrate through those trees first. The buildings are quite varied, as you can see from the architecture. They've been lowered, and then if anything reflected off, it has to come back through, you know, that stand of trees again, and has the distance to cover. So those are some of the significant things that are done, the lowering of the building, the addition of that whole row of landscaping that exists there.
Are you looking at anything else?
That's all I know of.
Okay. Okay. The other question I have is, it sounds like you got letters from Joint Powers Board and, I can't remember, Samtrans.
Samtrans.
For addressing Old County Road. As far as, well, okay, they were in the packet as far as, that were provided to the city. Has any attempt been made to reach out to High-Speed Rail to get a letter from High-Speed Rail that would suggest that they have no intention of having anything to, having any plans to take or utilize sections of Old County Road?
Madam Chair, the council, through the council, the, I believe the mayor has sent letters to the High-Speed Rail Authority. There was a recent letter that was considered by the city council that had a number of different issues. And there have been several, actually, several letters sent to the High-Speed Rail Authority over the last couple of years with regard to the city's concerns. And Old County Road has been one of the key concerns in protecting Old County Road and the concern about widening the tracks and, you know, taking parts of Old County Road has been a concern throughout a number of these letters that have been sent up to the High-Speed Rail.
Have we received...
And this was in response, I believe, to studies and alternatives and sort of the iterative process that it's been going through.
Have we received anything back from High-Speed Rail that suggests that they aren't or are going to take Old County Road?
You know, not that I'm aware of, but we can certainly look into that. And if we have more information to provide you, we can provide that at the next public hearing. We can provide that in your package.
It would be nice to simply ask them, you know, can you essentially say that you will do everything you can not to take Old County Road? I mean, it seems like a simple letter to send them and try and get a response back from them.
Yeah, I think that's part of the intent of the letters we've sent out there, you know, and unless Brian has something to add to it, that's all I have to add at this point.
Brian Fitzpatrick, real estate manager for Samtrans. And obviously, I'm not privy to what's going back and forth between the city and High-Speed Rail, except for one letter that I am somewhat aware of, which was in response to a letter sent on February 12, 2012, from former mayor Andy Klein to High-Speed Rail. And in that letter, Mr. Klein had indicated that city staff had worked with High-Speed Rail to develop an alternative that's called Alternative for Track Design that showed that Old County Road would not be impacted by High-Speed Rail. And in that letter, he set forward his request to High-Speed Rail that that alternative be furthered and be looked at to avoid impacts to Old County Road. And there was a response to that letter that I don't have at hand, but generally, it said High-Speed Rail understood the city's concerns. generally it said High Speed Rail understood the city's concerns and was going to be looking into that. I do have a copy of that, which I can provide through staff up to you guys. And again, I'm not privy to the others, but I am privy to that letter.
Thank you. That would be helpful to have as part of our documentation. And then I have two last things, not to pick on Sam Trans tonight, but I kind of feel like I am. And that, I didn't get an opportunity to go on the sidewalk, although I know the site pretty well. And I know that the neighborhood has concerns about garbage, and you and I have had a lot of these discussions over the years about garbage, and it's been an ongoing issue. And I would really like to see something sort of addressed concerning that, whether it's part of this or whether it's some sort of long-term solution that solves that issue. And lastly is, you know, I glanced through the design drawings, and one of the things that I noticed that really stuck out for me, being a transit rider all the time, is sort of just the rough sketch of the transit shelters. And I have a real problem because most of the transit shelters that are actually built are built to look really nice but are totally non-functional. The ones we have for Caltrain don't really protect you from the rain, and most people don't even bother to use them. So if we are going to put transit shelters in the transit station plan, can we actually make them functional? I'm less concerned with how artsy they look, and more concerned that they actually keep people dry when it's raining and out of the sun when it's a really warm day. So that's sort of my last comment. Thank you.
So Commissioner Marsters, to address the two concerns that you spelled out, the first one with regard to garbage at the station and cleaning up the area, and I believe that a lot of the complaints that I've heard, both through you and through some of the people on the east side, Ben in particular and other folks, is not just the station area, but the whole general area, the station, Old County Road, et cetera. We are, actually tomorrow, we're going to be having a meeting with the city. I'll be involved, and one of our people from our public relations department has been assigned specifically to the issue of cleanup at the station. And so what we've done is we've provided the city and other people a listing of when the station's cleaned, how often it's been cleaned, and how that's happened. We've also discussed where the demarcation line is between us and the city for cleaning up. And then tomorrow, the public relations person who's going to be the lead on this, and again, I think you had said this, and I completely concur, which is, this isn't an issue tied to the project. If the station's not clean and their concerns from the public will address them. This person's committed to this project now, but also committed to the project, you know, in the future. And by the project, I mean the cleaning up. We're going to be meeting with the city tomorrow to discuss what they do, what we do, is there anything that we do that impacts, you know, negatively what they do? And we're going to try to get to the bottom of ensuring that we can get that general area cleaned up.
Thank you.
As to the shelters, Sam Trans is designing the transit center component of the project. And we have a regular review process that we've set up with the city, and then regular design meetings that we're going to be having with the city. We're trying to set up another one now for the next couple of weeks. At that time, we'll look forward to the city's input on everything, including the efficacy of the shelters, and, you know, the types of shelters and suggestions as to what may and may not work in this area. And then, of course, our designers and our staff is looking at it as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll finish. Thank you, Scott. Well, at this point, what I'd like to do, because I know that many of us still have at least comments after public comment that we'd like to address for the project, the whole point, I believe, was to solicit public feedback and the commission's feedback at this point during the study session before the public hearing. So I know that we'll have more questions and comments to ask. But I'd like to go ahead and open it now for public comment, and I have a number of speaker cards here. Process question, do I have to officially open it since it's a study session? Or how does that work?
Commissioner Harper, you're just taking a public comment tonight. It's not a public hearing.
Correct.
And you're correct in your assessment that tonight's an opportunity to ask questions of the staff and take input from the public, which may in turn raise other questions that can sometimes be addressed tonight, but may be addressed later when this comes back to you in the formal public hearing and approval.
Perfect. I had asked, I know that we were specifically asked by Legacy to give comments about heightened massing, and Colette had also said that in her presentation, she wanted to know whether that was enough. So I'm hoping that many of the public comment will be directed towards that angle, but if you have anything else you'd like to add, please do so. I will say that I do ask that you focus your comments on new information, ideally information that wasn't presented by the previous speaker. So please do that if you can. And also to direct your questions to the commission, and then we will go, we will in turn ask questions of staff and of Legacy and of Sam Trans. And finally, since this is my first meeting as chair, I just wanted to state simply how I generally would hope that public comment go forward from this point on, and that I expect and certainly hope that the meetings will be, will be your opportunity to be a sounding board, but will also be conducted with a matter of decorum and respect, and that there be no disrespectful language or shouting from the audience. And I know that most of you guys are very good about that, but I wanted to state that since this is my first meeting. And with that, I'd like to go ahead and start off. Paul, did you want to come up and speak again? Great. Thank you.
I gave you guys all a sheet. My name's Paul Maginetti, live on Springfield Drive. I want to address a couple of things that were mentioned. First, the meeting that you're going to have, that Sam Trans is going to have with the city staff, I would like minutes to be taken, and those minutes given to the planning commission. And the other thing is, I'm pretty sure from the noise expert, that trees do not mitigate noise. I just wanted to correct that. I have a packet of documents that I got under the Public Records Act, and from those, I have a number of points that I want to make. We're at the entitlement stage now, so I think it's a good time to talk about the merits of the project. So I'll hand this package over to city staff when I'm done, and you guys can have access to it then. So I'm just hitting highlights here. First comment is, not only are we overbuilding luxury housing on an undesirable location, but the A-BAG and the One Bay Area growth forecasts predicting the need are highly questionable, and there's documentation to address that. Second, the claim that the multimodal station can serve as a destination for the community to gather, it ignores the objectionable noise of the site. And I use that term because that is the term that is used in the land lease agreement. And that's addressed and codified in section 15.4 of the land lease agreement. There's a copy of that in there. This project is highly subsidized, if you really think about it, with public money grants and land, Sam Trans land, San Carlos land, a forgivable loan to pay for hazardous waste cleanup, $4 million of an FTA grant for the multimodal station that has to move to make room for this transit village, and the El Camino enhancements are also paid by the FTA grant. And those enhancements are needed to decrease the projected number of trips from this project from 2,789 to 1,486 per day. There are also, and this is mentioned in the land lease agreement, that there are going to be investments that may come from Calpers pension and from AIG, both too big to fail. It's putting the investment risk on the taxpayer. Former Calpers CEO and a former board member at Calpers have been indicted for fraud, and we all know how AIG's reputation is. So if this fails financially, then the risk is going to be on the taxpayer to pick up the bill. The project is only going to generate a small net revenue. I believe the number is 130,000 a year. This may be lost if police costs and the public work impacts increase, and that's happened in the past. It may very well happen in the future. The impacts on traffic, they're going to be devastating. Even after the improvements, the total number of trips generated will be 1,486 per day. And if you look at the project report from Hexagon Transportation Consulting, this is their PowerPoint slides for the FEIR, has this big gold star right there, Holly and El Camino. And it says significant project impacts. So I guess that speaks for itself. The project building costs that have been supplied by Legacy are questionable, and these are being questioned by Sam Trans, suggesting there is still much room for compromise on mass and height. And Legacy is balking at paying the in-lu fees for affordable housing, despite all of the public subsidizing that they're enjoying. We should be getting more for our money than just the minimum amount with our handout begging for affordable housing, and that housing should be within the project. I think we have a right to ask that our money be spent wisely. And finally, Legacy should follow the example of, I'm not sure if it's PG&E, it may be the Basma grant, at Grand Stenrod, where they're working on that, where they found toxic soil contaminants, and they had to search for a location to put it because you can't just pick it up and just cart it away. You need to analyze it first. So they need to exercise that same caution when cleaning up the hazardous waste at the transit village site. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next, I have Dimitri. And then after Dimitri, I have Sam, just so you know.
Hi. It's nice to see you up there. Sad to see Scott needing to leave. So one thing that hasn't been talked about, since we are discussing the merits of the project, one thing that is yet to be discussed is the character and feel of San Carlos and the incredible massing and some of those 3D. And I know that the architects do their best to minimize those impacts, but on some of those flyovers, it was astounding, that massing. And it's going to totally change this community's character and feel. I don't want to talk about the specifics. Yeah, I'm not going to go over every single bullet point, but Building 8 is still, has been unchanged even with all of the feedback. That's a huge problem. The development does nothing to solve Peninsula's affordable housing needs. The projected rents are over three grand a month, providing incentives for all current landlords to increase their rents, making San Carlos even less affordable for renters. The project overbuilds the high-income housing allocation from the Association of Bay Area Governments' projected housing requirements by 154%. That's 100 high-income units over what the projections are. It's overbuilding the housing that we don't need. This project alone accounts for 50% of San Carlos's future housing allocation without providing any affordable housing and zero ownership opportunities for young families. When you add Wheeler Plaza to this, those two projects account for 65% of all future housing projections from A-BAG, and these projects are only one block away from each other. At Hacienda, it's probably over 80%. I didn't do the math for Hacienda, but yeah, at Hacienda, that's 80% within one block, one block, and another block. We're overbuilding in one area. Multiple driveways on El Camino, 600 additional residence cars, additional traffic from the commercial buildings. At our two most congested intersections, El Camino and Holly and El Camino and San Carlos Avenue, we will have gridlock. And there are going to be major changes that are going to be necessary that many people are not aware of, you know, perhaps making East San Carlos a one-way and making Holly a one-way, and all sorts of changes to try to fix this problem. It's going to create a mess. It impacts our neighborhood, Clearfield Park or L'Oreala or GESC, however you want to call it. I'm not going to go through all of those. We've been documenting them. I've got hundreds upon hundreds of pages of feedback. We are, we've seen an EIR that we feel is fraudulent. We've seen zero questions from city council. The rubber's hitting the road now. This is the project, looking at the project at its merits. It's up to the planning commission and city council to be strong and think about the residents, not just fattening Legacy and Sam Trans's pocketbooks. The project's being built without HSR and Caltrain electrification impacts fully understood. That was clearly enunciated by Mr. Fitzpatrick, who doesn't have any plans or can't provide what trees are going to be able to be built on the berm. We know that 60% of the options for passing lanes for HSR involve San Carlos. Of those options, 66% of them involve four-track passing lane, passing lane options in San Carlos, and the preferred alternative is a four-track passing lane system through San Carlos. You have to ask the question, what happens to the berm? Because you can't alter a berm. It's an earth berm. So that's going to have to come down. We're going to have these massive buildings, and we'll have to tear down that berm and then create some new concrete structures. I think that's why the land south of Arroyo isn't going to be turned into a park, because Sam Trans knows full well that they're going to start generating more income. And the issue that I have about this is that Sam Trans and Caltrain are running massive budget deficits, and instead of asking for a countywide transit tax, which I would support, because I'm a firm believer of mass transit, they're going to destroy the quality of life along the peninsula by overbuilding these stack-and-pack complexes to generate lease payments to the agency. So I feel this is a public-private partnership of the worst kind, where the public picks up the tab while Sam Trans and the private developer pick up all of the profits. So optimistic, I'm not going to talk about the revenue projections that was discussed before. Mediation. So during the two community meetings, the developers were talking about, bragging about, hey, we've reduced the project by the square footage of one football field. And if you take that at face value, you go, hey, that's not bad. It's a football field, right? You know, I kind of go, wow, that's pretty good. But if you look at it, that's the total square footage of the project as a whole. It's only a 7% decrease. One of the meetings, I said 8%. I was quoted in newspaper. Just Couch challenged that, yet he didn't provide the numbers. I did the number crunching myself. It's a 7% decrease. It's not enough. So look at it another way. If I was a marketing guy, and I was going to talk about the opposing view, if you'd like, the project, as it's currently constituted, is 15 football fields. And after listening to the community for five years and going through 10 or 11 mediation meetings, we've decided to make it 14 football fields. That's what these guys have done. So another way of saying that, I mean, does that sound like compromise? It's playing around the edges. Instead of a haircut, we get a minor trim. Actually, it's not even a trim. It's changing your part shampooing and blow drying. This project is pretty much exactly what they wanted. They've got all of their units. The density remains the same. Another big issue I have is adding the three-bedroom unit and taking away commercial space. When we talked about our biggest concerns, certainly south of Holly, was reducing the height, and Building 8 stood out as a very, very big problem because the trains are stopping, and you're getting additional noise bounce back. The sound guy said 2 dB increase. I'll get to that a little bit later. I'll get into some of the issues. But the city, absolutely, city staff absolutely adamantly refused to cut any square footage of commercial space, yet in order, for residents, yet to accommodate the folks who are making all the money. They're taking a haircut of commercial space. all the money, they're taking a haircut of commercial space that doesn't help the community. Didn't lower the buildings, did nothing there. It helps Legacy make its money. So I find that very odd indeed. So talking about lower height and density, I feel it's incumbent on the Planning Commission and the Council to set an upper baseline regarding the number of units allowed. If we're going to use the associated Bay Area government guidelines, let's use their maximum number of units, which were 183. I think, the project, you know, architecturally, isn't horrific. I'll say that. And there are certain aspects of it that could be good, but really, if you just made a three-story upper limit of the residential buildings, two-story upper limit on commercial, that's what we should be aiming for, because that would fit much better in the character of the community. And they took hardly any haircuts at all in terms of the two-bedroom and three-bedroom units, you know? They can change that mixture very easily and accommodate the same number of units. If we're not going to cut down on units, you can create more two-bedrooms or one-bedrooms or studios. I don't know if there are any studio apartments available, which would be more affordable for folks. And then that's a way we actually could create meaningful compromise instead of these guys getting everything that they want. I mean, you're seeing window dressing. You're not seeing real solutions being proposed. Traffics, shuttle, parking. Nothing mentioned about parking and the impacts of parking upon our neighborhoods. I won't get into the details. That's been discussed before. I do want to mention that at that walkabout last week, there were five or more shuttles while everyone was standing there, blocking traffic on Old County Road. Every single time this brought up to Samtrans, we haven't heard about this. We haven't heard about this. I have pictures with Mr. Fitzpatrick and a city council member with shuttles blocking. So I'm going to send that in the future to Mr. Fitzpatrick the next time he tells me he hasn't heard of this impact. I don't want to talk about improving the pedestrian crossings. I think there's more to be done there. I really like the suggestion of increasing that bell bout for folks who are trying to cross Holly Street, and I'd really like to see something there. I'm very concerned about the pedestrian plaza and bike commuters. I think it's great to have bike commuters, but we need a separate bike lane. There's no way you're going to get the bicyclists off the bikes if they can get away with it. And as someone who used to bike commute, bike and train commute, I see that this is going to be a huge problem. We have asked, we've talked about mitigations, about L'Oriola Park improvements, protecting Old County Road. The issue that I have and that the GESC board has regarding Old County Road is the MOU that Samtrans, Caltrain's Joint Powers Board were creating was completely and utterly meaningless. It's in their interest to be non-committal. And take a look at it. It was discussed in previous meetings how meaningless it was. We need something, we need something real. And to talk about previous points, sending letters isn't the same thing as getting action or an answer, right? So the city can send all the letters it wants to High-Speed Rail or to Samtrans. What we need are answers in order to make rational and constructive decisions about the project. Without those answers, without knowing how many trees we can put on the berm, it would be silly to approve this project. We need to have project, we need to make conditions of project approval that force these guys to actually create these plans, so we know how many trees we might get. All right. Cyclists, no improvements for bikes. That's just ridiculous. We know that they're going to ride across the underpass, create problems with pedestrians. There's less room because the buildings are buttered up against the old historic depot. And I think increasing bike usage is great. It's a great goal, but Samtrans needs to add a separate bike lane, removing steers, adding ramps. That should be a part of a project approval. And we all know enforcement from Samtrans doesn't work. They can't even pick up the trash. I have big issues with restaurants. The outdoor plaza, right on the opening of Montgomery Street. We just went through major issues with the Carlos Club expansion about noise, and neighbors came out complaining about noise and issues of sound leakage. And so now the plans are to add one, two, three, potentially four outdoor restaurants right next to residential. That's not resonating to me. It's very, very problematic. The wonderful farmer's market of four stands, four stands. I'm going to buy carrots, zucchini, and onions. Come on now. I mean, we know, we've all walked there. We know how much space there is. You can't do anything. I mean, it's great that we'll have a pedestrian plaza, but the architects were contradicting themselves by saying, hey, let's put up a food truck there. Well, that's ridiculous. If we're trying to get more pedestrians and cyclists, we certainly don't want to have food trucks driving up there and selling their wares. It's just silly. You know, I mentioned the no discussion of parking and impacts. Talking about improvements. So, you know, it's, I hate to come up here and sound negative. And I know you're laughing, and I'm glad that you're laughing, because I'm not a negative person. I'm actually an amazingly positive person, and I run projects far more complex than this. And I just want to create, you know, bring up an example. As part of the berm, trees were planted along East San Carlos Avenue. I don't know if anyone took a look during that walk. They're all stunted. No one takes care of them. We'll plant the trees. The city will say, hey, we'll do this, we'll do that, but unless you take care of them, it means nothing. Sound is incredibly, is incredibly problematic. We just heard today, no noise attenuation is possible because there are no suitable materials. The sound guy at one of the previous meetings clearly stated a 2 dB increase from bounce-back noise was there. He stated trees would provide a psychological impact to noise, not something that would remove noise. I'm very concerned that Mr. Byrd thinks somehow that the leaves are going to stop the train noise. That's not, that's not living in reality. Recently, I took a reading with a dB meter, 92 dB A, of the train entering and pausing at the station. I specifically asked for noise readings from the train entering and leaving the station, which were emitted from the FEIR. So the FTA Noise and Vibration Manual states that if your existing noise exposure is 75 dB, you have a 0 dB allowable increase from the FTA manual, which has Caltrain Trains on its front cover. San Carlos land use policies and the general plan, land use compatibility for community noise environment, single-family residential, it has normally acceptable, conditionally acceptable, and unacceptable. Unacceptable states new construction or development should generally not be undertaken because mitigation is usually not feasible to comply with noise element policies. For single-family residential households, you know what the number is? 75 dB. We're currently at 92. All right. Hey, look, forget it. Let's not, let's say we're not single-family residential. Let's say we're multifamily residential. Problem, 75 dB. You shouldn't build. Outdoor sports and recreation, neighborhood parks, hey, it goes up to 80. 80, 92. We're still over. Office buildings, same thing, 80. Auditoriums, concert halls, amphitheaters, it goes down to 70. San Carlos's own land use compatibility says it's unacceptable to build construction above those if you're going to increase. I don't know what to say. I don't know how city staff is cherry-picking through its land use policies and stating, whoa, it has to be a 3 dB increase, absolutely ignoring the logarithmic curve of decibels. It's like earthquakes. A 3-0 versus a 9-0, an 8-2 versus a 9-0 is unbelievably huge. 3-0 versus a 6-0, not so much. It's logarithmic. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dimitri. I had Sam next, and then following Sam, I have Ben.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I will belabor points previously made, but I would like to echo concerns about this particular development, the amount of luxury housing that's provided. It's a model for more of these types of developments up and down the peninsula. So what we're going to be seeing with this transit-oriented development is the cost of housing is going to go up for everybody, and there's no affordable housing proposed here, which means it's got to be built somewhere else, so you just punted the problem, and you haven't solved the problem. And so we'd really like to see either a reduction in the number of luxury units or affordable housing added to the project. Again, to echo Dimitri's concerns about noise, it is a very noisy environment, particularly with the berm. When that was built, the noise is heard a lot further east in the neighborhood than when it was flat on the ground. And you also have to keep in mind, there's a 10-foot to 12-foot differential in elevation from the east side to the west side, add 40 to 50 feet on top of that, and you're talking about a lot of deflection with potentially more, even if you do electrification and you add High-Speed Rail, you're going to have a much more intensified use of this railroad corridor than you do, you have historically, or you do now. While you have letters from Samtrans and Caltrain, you don't have a letter from the Joint Powers Board, who actually is the property owner of the railroad corridor, committing itself, and we heard this from Mark Simon when we were in mediation, that the Joint Powers Board is the property owner, so High-Speed Rail is going to need to do whatever the Joint Powers Board, but the Joint Powers Board isn't committing itself to limiting the impacts to Old County Road, so would really like to see that in writing, if they in fact are the property owner and have that capability, which I believe that they do. We've gone on record multiple times, you know, there's been a lot of excessive public meetings associated with this project over five years. We had 11 mediation sessions on top of it, trying to reach compromise, trying to further the discussion, but really a lot of meetings on this. And again, a point that comes up is where are the benefits to the community? We're adding 600 more residents to this community east of El Camino Real, and L'Oriola Park is the local park, and there's a need for acquisition of land between Old County Road and L'Oriola Park. We would like the city, we would like the Planning Commission to make a recommendation to the city council to say additional land needs to be acquired so you could provide more public amenities for all these future residents that are going to live here, and the community building that's there, which needs to be torn down because it's not seismically safe and it needs to be upgraded, should be replaced. You know, the community has various public wants, has to parks, whatever those are, that's the place to do it to benefit future residences. The developer was in agreement in those meetings to provide the in-lu fees, the park-in-lu fees towards L'Oriola Park, if the city would commit itself to making L'Oriola Park a priority. So I mean, and given 80 percent of the city's revenue comes from the east side, there should be some commitment to actually addressing the needs of these future residents, and we would like the Planning Commission to make that recommendation to the city council. I mean, we've tried to like address these issues for the last five years all along the way. It's kind of on you now to make the point to the city council that we're just trying and trying to repeat ourselves over and over again, please make these things conditions of approval and make the city a partner in this development with the developer for the benefit of the community. In terms of the height and density, we have two buildings of concern, Building 3 and Building 8. Would like to see Building 3 reduced to three floors. Would like to see Building 8 reduced to two stories, and would like to see an increase in Buildings 4 and 5 to four stories along Holly Street, which is not directly across the street from Single Family Residential. So where we shaved off before, we think that's really where you should put the density if you're going to put your density, and do it to fit the community, and this is not just an empty space. This has to be a development that fits into the context of the existing community and without creating impacts to existing residents, and that's the point, is how to make this development fit. Regarding landscaping, that was discussed. And again, the layers of responsibility, you know, what's Legacy's responsibility versus Caltrans or Joint Powers Board responsibility versus the city of San Carlos responsibility? I think this needs to be bapped out, because like a cigarette butt, which can be blown off of a train station, affects, you know, another property owner, blows into the community and becomes some single-family residential, you know, a plant needs to be maintained, and who's going to be doing the maintenance, and those clear areas of responsibility really need to be defined. So I think mapping out the landscaping and where that jurisdiction really needs to happen. Regarding parking, the issue of permit parking, if you're not going to provide enough parking spaces for the residential and the business developments here, and you're going to say, hey, community, you should absorb those, do a permit parking process in place, so you absorb the impacts, we think that there should be a nexus with providing free parking in the Caltrain parking lot as well, so that you're not just pushing all the impacts into the community and say you deal with it. And those should be only done if the community wants it, and it should only be done if the developer and Samtrans are paying for it. You're not overburdening existing homeowners who are already overburdened with people parking for free in the neighborhood and cutting through streets and parking there for Giants schemes and special events. North of Holly Street is not as close to the train station, and that should only happen if it's warranted. The south of Holly is really, if you were to look at, you know, where's your priorities? South of Holly is a higher priority for addressing that parking issue currently compared to north of Holly. That doesn't mean if you don't provide enough parking for the residential north of Holly, you may not have an issue with folks parking their cars in the community, and all of a sudden you've created a new problem and you need to have permit parking there too. But, you know, we'd like to not push the impact for somebody else to deal with who's not, I mean, you know, you don't want to have other people parking in front of your house and you can't even park in front of your own house. The issue of shuttles and taxis, which have only been there for about eight years on Old County Road, need to be moved permanently, and they need to be moved quickly to, you know, the west side train station. They can happen today, tomorrow. There's no reason it needs to wait, and it's been postponed. It's been punted. It's been, oh, maybe we'll do it, maybe we won't. Cars are cutting through the neighborhood. They're idling. They're turning, there's littering. We have noise issues, car radios. If this is going to be, you know, how does this train, you know, currently interact with the community, and what do you do when you intensify all of that? I mean, let's just try and get this right now before we talk about intensification of use, and those taxis and shuttles, which are a problem, need to move. Again, we've had problems with garbage transients at the train station, and I think part of that problem, again, like the landscaping, is whose responsibility where? You know, if you're taking a blower and you're blowing all the cigarette butts onto the city street or in the bushes, and that's exactly what was happening, and then blowing into the community, and then the community gets really pissed off, and it's so unnecessary for this to happen if there was clear lines of responsibility and clear follow-up on just picking up the garbage, so that, you know, we're not pushing impact into the community when it really should just be addressed at the source. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Sam. I have Ben next, followed by Tim.
First of all, I want to apologize for disrespecting your Planning Commission. I also want to say to everyone in the room, Legacy and Samtrans and Al and all those guys and all you guys, you know, it really isn't personal. I know everyone here is trying. I know the architects and the landscape guys, and everybody's trying to make this work. So don't take any of the comments personally. I've seen Jeff out in front of my house all kinds of days doing sightline, you know, shots, and people are really making an effort here, Jess. All you guys are. I want to kind of start with big picture, and again, this is not personal. There's kind of a historical bait and switch, and I saw a new potential ramification of the planning development of the corridor, for example. And the berm was put in there originally to provide a grade separation, and that land that was behind it, you know, they eminent-domained a bunch of businesses, and it was supposed to use as a rail yard. supposed to use as a rail yard for the grade sep, and now it's doing this. And they made an extra compact berm. They spent $27 million, instead of $4 million, to preserve our view. And now our view is no longer significant, according to the EIR that unfortunately you guys voted for. So that feels like a bait and switch, and this feels like a bait and switch. And there was just an article that came out in the Palo Alto Daily Post, and what it said is that 169,000 homes in the Bay Area, one out of nine single-family homes in the Bay Area are going to be taken for some reason. And the reason they cited, it was so objectionable, I couldn't believe it, it was that it turns out, according to the researchers that are saying that they should take these 169,000 homes, that Latinos and Asians like living in apartments. That's what they said. So when I read that kind of stuff, and then I see this kind of stuff coming across the street, which were apartments, it makes me think that our homes are really ripe for the eminent domaining. And I hear about Plan Bay Area, I hear about the Grand Boulevard Initiative, all these sorts of things want to put a lot of density right near the railroad. And so if this is a bait and switch, as I'm saying it could be, you get these things built, and what's next? Well, maybe our 5,000-square-foot lots and 820-square-foot homes, because it's a great place. So I just want to put that on the record, that maybe this will come in, but we really would love if Greg Rubens would be able to put some stronger language into an agreement that enables our homes to stay beyond 2030 and not be put... Like, it was just four years ago that a different planning commission voted to rezone our neighborhood, multi-apartment, at 11:30 at night. And you guys weren't here for that, and I don't blame you for that, but that's the kind of constant strain we're living under to keep our homes. Couple other big points. Abbott and Costello, you guys ever seen that Who's on First parody? Well, that's kind of what this is. And again, it's not personal to any of the guys in the room, but we can't figure out how to do things together. We can't figure out how to water our trees. You know, it is so... I mean, I'm so glad you guys got to see what we see on Old County Road every day when you came to the walk. I mean, it is just a dump over there. And, you know, Mike Arby explained to me, "Well, that was the one thing we weren't able to do. We were able to build the grade sep, but then we never got the funding to redo Old County Road." So we've had non-ADA compliant sidewalks for the last 20 years. We're living in a dump. And I refuse to live in that dump any longer. So what I think we need to figure out is how do we... I mean, literally, I was with a tour of one of Brian Fitzpatrick's associates who's trying to help the situation and is brought in for that, and she and Seamus Murphy were telling me, "Well, if you go on this side of the rail, that's city land, and this side is Caltrain." And so if someone decides to throw their wrapper over the edge, then the city's got to clean that up. Well, what I'm noticing is no one is cleaning up everything all the way ever. And so what you have is you have a cursory kind of picking of a few items, and then cigarette butts are left there for 18 months, two years, until they biodegrade. The landscape is littered with garbage, and it may have been getting blown off, we don't know, but it's a dump. And so maybe this project is going to bring the kind of attention to the neighborhood that's going to fix those kind of things. But right now, it's like, who's on first? You know, you just don't know who's responsible for what, and the coordination capabilities of the groups involved is not very high. I actually have more faith in Legacy to water their trees, just because they seem like they do that a lot. We got to figure out how to water these trees. We need that in writing, okay? The maintenance plan for these trees has got to be in writing. Next thing, well, I mean, this one's a strong one, but laughing all the way to the bank. That's kind of what this project currently is. It's a bunch of public money and other people making a lot of money. It's what Dimitri said about how do you fund a very important service in the trains? But people are laughing, because this project, which was originally stated at 48 feet, which then was exposed to be 55 feet, all the original drawings said it was 48 feet tall, and then we learned it's 55 feet. Now it's dropped, you know, a few percentages down, 7%. So it's 14 out of 15 football fields. We actually wanted this thing to be 35 to 40% smaller. It's 7% smaller. Now, obviously, you can't get everything you want, but it's just too big. And one thing that I... I don't get upset very often, and I know I did earlier, but historically I don't as much as one might think, but one thing that has really upset me is the characterization of the mediation meetings. It's like, just because you come to... I mean, did you guys go to college? I'm sure you did, right? You didn't pass the class just by going there. You had to do some work in addition to it. And I'm not saying people haven't done work, but basically what I'm saying is that you can't cite the mediations as having been a success, just because you attended. You know, real, significant, deep cuts need to be made, and whether it's an overstatement of labor fees by Legacy that could actually make the project cheaper, because it's not as expensive, as they're saying, as we're seeing in the internal emails between Legacy and Sam Trans bickering over labor fees, or whether it's Sam Trans lowering their lease because they got the land on a false pretense of they needed it for a rail yard, and now they're using it to build all these houses across the street, whatever it is, there's got to be a way to slice this thing down. Building Three is kind of the microcosm of that, because those same mediation meetings I was referring to, which is incredible 11 mediation meetings, when they... When the dog and pony show occurred, I attended a dog and pony show on Thursday, and they kept citing those meetings, and John Ward, who's from San Carlos, grew up around here, he's some local guy, and therefore we should just build these things. The bottom line is, the mediation said that we want Building Three, three stories, the whole way across. And just to get six units, they have the audacity to build a 55-foot building across the street from Richard Peterson's house, Richard and Ashley Peterson's house at 365 Old County Road, and Marnie and Jeremy Perini's house at 352 Old County Road. Should we just throw them under the bus? These are families, they can't afford to move. You know, they've got a 55-foot building across the street from their 12-foot homes. They have nice homes, by the way, on Old County Road. And maybe they shouldn't have built those homes on Old County Road the way they did back then, but guess what? These homes have been purchased, they live there, you know, their avocado tree's going to stay. So I just don't think that's fair, and I was extraordinarily upset, and I even called one of our city council members to ask, "Is this really true? Did they actually say at the negotiations that this thing's going to be three stories on Old County Road, and then they made it four?" And everybody knows, and I'll never accept that. So that's very difficult. I'm going to go over a few other things. So I talked about future eminent domain risk. I talked about trees and water, I talked about garbage, I talked about four stories. I'm going to talk big, though, now. I think the process is not working. So the process that we all have right now, it's been thrown back to you guys, and I'm not even really sure, and maybe you guys can enlighten me on this, what is the planning commission allowed to do? Like, I remember you guys were all asking, "Well, are we supposed to approve this EIR, even if we don't really agree with it?" There were points you guys didn't agree with, I mean, clearly, and you just approved it because now we're going to talk about entitlements. But what... Okay, we're talking about entitlements now. So what can you do? What is the plan? And this isn't, I'm not being critical, I just really want to know. Like, what can you guys do to make this thing fit? Do you guys have any power to do that, or is it just more listening and more moving papers around, but nothing really getting smaller? How does it work? That's a real question.
You want a real answer right now?
Yeah.
Greg, I'm sorry, I noticed you leaning in.
What can they do to make it smaller? I'll ask the question again, Greg. Or do they have any power, or is it just more paper shuffling?
Well, I think I'll answer that question through the chair generally, because this is a study session, and I appreciate the question, because it's something I made a note of, and I think the staff reports for the project are going to have some answers to that. But generally, the planning commission, you have the authority to review the application. There are constitutional limits on it, however, and so we have to follow the rules and regulations of the city in evaluating any application. That includes making or not being able to make the necessary findings for approval or disapproval of the project. And so you do have a lot of power. You do have a lot of power to review the application, make it better, add conditions of approval that are consistent with the findings that you need to make. We have to be careful of claims where you've stepped over the line into something that's not appropriate or unconstitutional. An example of that is an exaction or a condition that is... Could amount to a taking if it's something that's beyond, does not have a nexus to the project. I mean, so that's the general constitutional limitation. So, but we'll, you know, we're... These questions are all very helpful for the staff, so we can respond to them and answer some of the questions that are raised tonight.
Sounds like watch my hand, trust us. Okay. In other words, we don't know what we can do, and we don't know what you're here to do. I was talking to Dimitri yesterday, I don't even know what... I know they have good intentions, I know everyone has good intentions, but what can we actually do to make this project fit? So it would be great to get a real answer about, Greg, just a... Greg?
Oh, sorry.
Just a real answer, how to make it smaller. Can they? Okay, and I'm going to end on this. Final microcosm is noise. So I thought it was really cool that you guys put in a noise attenuation requirement. I was really excited to see that, and that was like, one of the... I know you guys had your hands tied, and you had to... You basically had to approve this thing, even though you didn't believe it, and it was obvious. It was one of the weirdest meetings I've ever seen, where you guys were saying, "Hey, well, we don't agree with this stuff, but do we have to approve it?" Yes, you have to approve it, the city staff said, so you approved it. And you put in this cool thing on noise, which said that we're going to try to attenuate the noise. Now we've heard that noise can't be attenuated. So this microcosm is... It's exemplary of the entire project, which is the what's in it for us thing. So we got 70%, I don't even agree with the percentage that Dimitri said. We have 70% of future housing for all of San Carlos through 2022 is across the street from my house, on a tiny sliver. Bonnie McClure gets nothing, she has a beautiful park next to her house and gets to love this project, but no one gets the impact other than us. We're the ones getting the impact, the major impact. So it's just a... I'm going to end it on, this is not what I would call economic justice, and it's not social justice. It's basically, there was a guy, and he's not here right now, but his wife is still here, who told me on the way, "You know why this project's going to happen? This project's going to happen because people in our neighborhood are working class, they don't have time to attend this, they're too busy with their jobs." And it's just, it's like what happens in Fruitvale, when they put in a needle incineration plant in a poor neighborhood. This is analogous. This is us assuming all the impact and not even getting a single benefit. Like, we can't even get the shuttle... Like, Al told me recently now that the taxis aren't even moved. Like, those have been promised to be moved for over a year now. Now I guess the taxis are staying on our side. I don't see any benefits, and we need to have some benefits. So figure out a way to reduce the impact, and figure out a way to extrinsically offer benefits to us. We want to be helpful. We want to work with these people. It's just, this is the rawest deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. I had Tim next, then Bonnie. I will just, again, ask that we only talk about stuff that hasn't already been addressed. Thanks, Tim.
Then I guess I could sit down.
Or briefly echo.
Briefly.
Very briefly.
I have a couple caveats before I start. I only brought one page, so I'm trying to behave myself tonight. The first thing, it actually came up in what Ben described as a dog and pony show on Wednesday, when they did the presentation, and, you know, I saw the picture of the plaza, and my question is, and I'd like this answered either by city staff or somebody, what model do we have from San Francisco to San Jose that has a plaza right on El Camino? Whether it be a pedestrian, or in this case, it's a plaza where people are going to sit and have their lunch, and bikes are going to ride through. I would like to see a model of that and see how that works. And in the back of my head, I don't think there is a model, and there's an obvious reason why. You don't put things like that right on El Camino. Moving along, we talked about the final EIR, and that this planning commission passed the final EIR. There's a couple issues I have. Number one, noise. In the final EIR, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I would like to know, I believe that the noise consultant or expert stood up here and said that there were some kind of attenuation or some kind of attenuation process that could be put up on the buildings, on the exterior of the buildings, to mitigate noise. That is no longer true. Secondly, traffic. There's really been no traffic study worth its while to be done here, and it's been brought up by a few city council members, that the traffic details need to be taken care of, especially along Holly Street, before this project goes through. That needs to be taken care of. Doesn't matter how much traffic there is right now, without this structure, there's going to be a mass amount of traffic. My other issue with the EIR and the mitigations that did not happen is I don't believe we had the architect... Or not the architectural, but the designer for the trees here. I was shocked to hear tonight that we're looking at five to 17 years before these trees reach their full maturity. You're asking me to wait at least five years, if not 17 years, to cover up these buildings or become a mitigation? Ben mentioned a breakdown in the process. I see this as a major breakdown in the process. The other thing that was mentioned that Ben said is a bait and switch, and my analogy to this is a moving target. And I'll bring up a couple things. First of all, in the mediation process that we had, the one thing I asked, I mean, I talked about height and stuff, but the one thing was when high-speed rail comes through, when electrification comes through, when any kind of construction comes through, that if this building is existing at the time, and it comes down to taking Old County Road or taking some of these buildings, that we asked for some kind of assurance from Sam Trans and from the developers, that the buildings would be taken first, and we never got that. And if it does come to push and shove, or it does come to the courts, and it comes to litigation, there's going to be problems with that. I'm not going to talk about the general plan and the land use elements, I've already made ad nauseam comments about that. They talked a little bit about ABAG and the mandates. The reason why I want to bring this up, though, is because the massing relates directly to the economics of this project, and tonight I'm going to talk mainly about the economics of this project. Ben said nothing personal, I take this completely personal. This is going to have a huge effect on my family, it's going to have a huge effect on my community, and it's going to have a huge effect on my city, citywide. The first thing I want to address that was brought up is that ABAG has a mandated amount of future housing through 2022. I will say this, we need development, we need housing in San Carlos, we need something built there. I agree, I agree, we do, whatever it is. However, when you're talking about putting 280 units, when overall, from low, moderate to above moderate, is 401 units total, and that's without even adding Wheeler Plaza, we're looking at 121 outstanding units. Why are we putting them all there? Well, there's a lot of arguments for that, and I've gotten arguments from the city saying, "Well, redevelopment money. That was our first sale that we had." Alice Abad stood up at our meeting and said, "Hey, we have, we're going to get pass-through redevelopment funds, and it's going to be millions and millions of dollars in tax increments." Well, in 2011, I sent him an email and said, "What's up with this? You know, the RDA is going to go away." And it did go away. So one of my main concerns is that we're putting 280 units in this small sliver of land. There are other places where these units can go, and I'm asking the planning commission to really take that into account. Secondly, the city is going to be receiving about $130,000 in general fund revenue over the next 20 years. This is straight out of the financial impact analysis. My problem with this is, number one, this does not take into consideration the cost to the schools, or the parks, or the fire department. One thing in the FIA, which I've asked, and I still have not received any information on, is that the FIA states that there will be $0 impact to the fire department. Then why are they putting fire lanes in here? $0 from this development. So it's going to be less than $130,000 right there. Schools, you will hear the city tell you that we've talked to the superintendent, and the superintendent says, "We're going to be able to take in these students, however many we need." I will tell you, as a school teacher for 25 years in San Mateo Foster City School District, that the students' best interests are not necessarily taken by the superintendent and by administrators, it is by the teachers. And right now, we're seeing that effect in San Mateo Foster City Schools, the development all the way along El Camino and from the Franklin-Templeton development as well. This is the first year in 25 years I'm going to have the sixth-grade class as large as it is, and it's happening with fifth grade, too. It's going to happen here as well. Next. Next, the other concern I have about the FIA is that it takes into consideration the fact that it takes in city employee costs, talking about full-time employment. It does not take into consideration infrastructure at all. What it does is it adds one-time payment fees from the developer and from Sam Trans, whoever, but, but those are one-time impact fees. Everybody here got a notice about sewer rates increasing, and about water rates increasing. Sewer rates possibly increasing up to 20, 25% over the next however many years. What's going to happen when this development goes in? Moving along, I want to just make a couple quotes here. This is, this is one from the FIA, again, talking about tax increments. The new FIA talks about the difference between this, with the RDA funds and without RDA funds. "The revenue stream formerly known as tax increment, which accrued to local redevelopment agencies from property taxes levied within redevelopment project areas, is now subject to a revised management system." What my question is to city staff and to the city council and the planning commission, is what exactly is that management system? How does that fit in here with the massing? What my understanding is, from now on, that you guys are going to be having to ask for grants based on how many units there are. I think that's one of the answers here of why we're getting so many units, because you get grants based on that instead of redevelopment funds. I don't know how you're going to get them, or if they're going to go through. Continuing on, quote, "The remaining increment generated by this project is assumed to be distributed via AB8, Assembly Bill 8, general levy share, to taxing agencies in line with the property tax manager's current guidelines. The analysis found the two projections to be nearly identical." I don't, I don't understand that. "Therefore, the estimate used in this study utilizes a figure shown in Table 8," I'm not going to go into that. "It may be noted, however, that even if the guidelines are not adhered to and an alternate methodology employed, the impact is likely to be minimal due to the nature and the pass-through of payments of the former redevelopment agency." Well, my question is, is if they're talking about pass-through payments from, from the redevelopment agency, this hasn't even been built yet, so how are we going to get pass-through payments through that? So that's, it's really cryptic how this is explained. The last thing I want to do is I want to share an email with you. This was an email that was sent to a city staffer, and it asks, "What does property tax revenue have to do with the San Carlos Transit Village impacts and revenue enhancements? This is slated to be a development on publicly owned land with the buildings owned by the developer and land leased to the developer, land leased." Please correct me if I'm wrong, but there is not one cent of property tax revenue coming from this project. There isn't. It's publicly owned land. It's coming from the sticks from that. When I look at my property tax bill that I get, over 50% of it is taxed on property. Why are we putting 280 units there and expecting that we're going to be getting $130,000? Come on, people, we really, really need to look into this. The last thing I'm going to say is that we did a public documents request, and this is why I'm taking this personally. This is from a member of Sam Trans to the city, I won't mention any names. This is in reply to my last question from Sam Trans. "We do need to think about how we will address the age and reports," they're talking about the FIA, "and the potential disintegration of RDAs." This was before the RDAs went away. "As to the below response is concerning. As we know, the property will generate possessory interest tax on the value of the development, which is pretty close to property taxes." You're not getting property taxes off of this property, just off the sticks. "I suggest we nip Tim's statement in the bud, so this does not start getting spread." I do take this personally. The last thing I want to say, if you break up those buildings, and you make them smaller, and you put a bike path all the way from the north to Royal, you're going to eliminate all these problems we're talking about. Please think about it, 280 units is way too much. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. I have Bonnie, and then my final speaker card is, and forgive me if I'm mispronouncing this, Adna Lane? Oh, I really butchered that, I apologize. Bonnie?
Hi, Bonnie McClure. The first thing I wanted to say is that I'm pleased with what Legacy has done about cutting the heights in most of the buildings. I think it's going to help with the articulation, and if you just had three-story buildings along there, you'd have block, 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 block. No interest. Articulation is one of the things that we discussed during the general plan. Also, the general plan called for this kind of development on that land, it's in our general plan, there's no question, and the height was okay. So I'm wondering why there's so much discussion. I understand from the east side, I've walked that neighborhood, and I do understand the problem. However, there are a lot of people that live in San Carlos, a lot of businesses in San Carlos that are on the west side. There's no consideration in any of the stakeholders meetings of anybody from the west side. I understand there that the city council and the Chamber of Commerce and some businessmen were asked in some meetings, but I don't know, it wasn't announced publicly. So I'm just saying that from the, from a westsiders' viewpoint, this looks like a beautiful project, it's similar to the hacienda. They do need to get busy on the trip management. Sierra Club is in favor of transit-oriented development, but we do need to knuckle down on the parking, and I don't believe in free parking. Free parking just means more travel. People ought to be on shuttles or walking. Obesity is one of our big problems in this country, I'm a good example of it, and I, I still try to walk 40 minutes a day in the hills, but it doesn't seem to do me much good, so maybe I'll just have to start walking down to the train station. But I, I know that mediation will be going on. The land use part of the mediation matrix that we have here, I, I really agree with the city, you shouldn't be agreeing to any land use zoning being held way out in the future. 2030 is long enough. We can't get trapped into not being able to keep up with what's going on. This project would be a good, good improvement along the Grand Boulevard. We have to do our share on that housing, we need those in-lu funds, and they have agreed to provide in-lu funds for affordable housing. So the city could put that together with maybe money from Wheeler Plaza, and with a nonprofit organization, build some affordable housing, which we need, and as citizens, we should hold the city to that, that they have to build that housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. And then, I'm sorry, can you repeat your name for me?
My name is Adina Levin.
Adina Levin, thank you.
And so, good evening, commissioners and staff, and I'm, so I'm a member of the Caltrain Citizens Advisor Committee, and before that, I was on the bicycle committee, but I'm here, and I'm also Sierra Club member, I'm here speaking for myself, and I would, I'm interested in this area personally, because I, you know, come to the meetings here, and also, I don't live in San Carlos, I live in Menlo Park, but I come to San Carlos for these meetings, and also for the farmer's market and other activities in San Carlos, and so I just wanted to make a couple of comments on the bicycle and pedestrian access. First of all, I'm glad that that's being improved. I mean, if you go there as a cyclist or a pedestrian, it seems like someone has designed it to be a maze and to be as, you know, confusing as possible, and so I'm glad that, that is being improved with the shorter street crossings for greater safety. And as a cyclist, I think, I identify with the person who said that there were cyclists who spoke a little bit earlier, who said that, you know, people are going to ride through, and so if the design could be made to make it separate, and to keep the cyclists away from the pedestrians, and have design choices that cause people to slow down, I think that would really be an ideal way to do it. And I know that people are concerned about, you know, really aggressive cyclists who race through, and one of the things that making the area more bicycle-friendly, overall with, you know, Old County Road and the north-south route, and the route to and from downtown and so on, by making it friendly, you get a much greater diversity of cyclists. Instead of just getting the, you know, young, macho, aggressive people, you know, you get more women, you get more elderly people, you get more children, and you wind up with people on average going slower and on average being better behaved. So if that design can be made to both encourage cycling, and then by design have a slow-paced bike path through, so that you're not having to, you know, figure out how to dodge pedestrians, I think that would really be an ideal way to go. Another thing that, question that someone raised is, is there an example on the corridor of a public plaza that's off of El Camino? One thing I would recommend to look at is Cafe Baroni in Menlo Park, which is right at, you know, across the street from the downtown area, kind of a similar location at El Camino and Santa Cruz, and is really one of the nicer places in the city.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Seeing no other speaker cards, and since this is public comment and not public hearing, I'm going to go ahead and public comment and return it back to the commission to ask any additional questions or to give any additional comments and feedback to city staff or to Legacy before we move on to public hearing at the next meeting. Michael, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. First of all, I know, I appreciate what Legacy has done with these revisions, it's not, with clearly all the concerns that are voiced in every one of these meetings and throughout mediation, I don't believe that there is a way to just plug in a formula on their computer and have it spit out something that addresses everybody's problems. I think a lot of time has gone into evaluating this project, and we keep asking them to do more. And clearly, we do that because it seems like public opinion is telling us it is not enough yet. And there is a few concerns. Obviously, Building 8 has not changed at all in height, and Building 3 is still at four stories. And I kind of wonder, and it's probably not simply to be antagonistic, but these are, these are major requests, and to have them sort of, I don't know, not glossed over, but it, it has the appearance of being ignored, and I think it draws more attention to those items on the demand mediation list than it should. So I think a little more effort should be made to see what can be done with those two buildings as far as height. The in-lu fees for the affordable housing, I personally think this is the perfect project to incorporate affordable housing, and to just essentially kick the can down the road and say, well, this $9 million can go toward partnership with whomever to come up with this affordability, affordable housing. I think we're missing an opportunity, and it doesn't have to necessarily be 15% of the project, but I think it should be a portion of this project. We need it now, we needed it yesterday. I'm extremely still concerned with the Holly Street traffic. Adding anything to the gridlock that we have there with no real solution is just not acceptable. We need, we need to figure this out, as well as the noise issue that seems to still exist. These are things that we can't wait to build it and then say, okay, well, let's figure out, you know, we didn't expect it, the study said this, and now it's that, so now what do we do? These things have to be worked out ahead of time. I had a quick question, Al, maybe you can answer this for me. In some of the mediation action steps, we had, we have $425,000 that's allocated to improve the L'Oreal building, the actual building. It says that we have $2.2 million, which is slated for fiscal year 2016 to 2020, to replace the existing building. What is the $425,000 for, where it says improvements are also discussed as a separate project?
I don't think it was to territaria rebuild, I think it was for improvements to the existing building.
Right, $425,000.
Yeah, right. So what we can do is go back and clarify what the specific details of that $425,000 are. What they had done is, they had a consultant go look at the buildings in the park and suggest improvements to the building and park based on the current condition, and that's, so that's where those numbers came from.
So that is not just for that existing building?
The $425,000 might have been actually for the building, but I can't recall. This is contained in the park's master plan document, so what we can do is clarify that at your next meeting.
Let's see. Clearly, the shuttle issue, enough people have said that this is, this is a problem. We saw it on the walking tour. These shuttle drivers have no concern for anybody but just doing whatever it is that they want to do, they block the traffic, they create hazards, it's just, it's a really awful, awful place to be, especially if you're waiting to get picked up, because if somebody does come to pick you up, there's a shuttle right there, and you can't even get to the people that you have to pick up. So that, that really should be on a fast track to be moved, whether or not this project happens or not. It's clearly a problem. Definitely need to tighten up the laces on the garbage and landscaping and who's responsible for what. It just seems that whoever comes up with a plan is dependent on some other agency, and it needs to be very tightly wound together in a nice little package. Otherwise, we have no assurances that the concerns that we have now and the problems that we've had in the past are not going to continue.
Thank you, Michael. Jesse?
Well, I took a lot of notes, and I was trying to really focus on things that were mentioned more than three or four times. I mean, Building 3 seems to be mentioned almost every time as, as an issue when it comes to the massing of that. Obviously, laying out the responsibilities of maintenance seemed to be another big issue. It sounds like, I mean, Al, correct me if I'm wrong, that these will be detailed out as, as we get commitments from Joint Power Board and everything else, and in forms of being able to plant on Birm and who's, who's going to be maintaining that, so it sounded like maintenance of that was, was a big issue. The shuttling on the east side, I don't under, I mean, I don't understand, it seems like a fairly simple solution, but maybe, maybe I'm wrong, I don't know. So that was mentioned. So that was mentioned more than four times. Affordable housing was another thing that was brought up. I'd also like to acknowledge, I mean, there has been quite a bit of work done. The walking tour helped at least me visualize, and I don't know, hey, I'm speaking for myself, the overall massing of the project, the views from multiple streets. I think it could be acknowledged that we're not going to get a perfect development out of this if it goes through, you know, but the reality situation is, you know, we've got to, we've got to work on the really three or four really hot buttons. And I think we're almost there. I mean, it seems like we've, we've made quite a bit of progress. But those are the, the main things that I was able, I mean, I've, I've got a ton of other, other things, but those are the ones that just stood out to me, with everybody getting up and talking about, you know, the public getting up and talking about the issues. Those are the ones that really stood out.
Great, thank you. And I, of course, have some as well. I'm going to kind of break them up in, in sections here. Actually, a question on landscaping, and maybe this would be best for city staff, but on the walking tour and certainly in Paul's assessment and in hearing the different responsibility areas surrounding plantings on the berm versus plantings on Old County, I also noticed that there were portions of the very ends of the streets that could use more plantings. Riverton comes to mind. Is that, is the city supportive of putting additional trees at the ends of streets, not just Old County, but at the ends of streets to improve landscaping?
Potentially, but the trees in the streets are actually, the municipal code requires maintenance by the property owners.
I see, okay. Thank you. And then I have a question about the size and, and density. I don't expect you to answer it now, but this is something that comes to mind. I'm curious about the 280 units and how key this number is. I noticed, of course, that the square footage had come down quite a bit, but that the number of units stayed the same. And I guess I'll be looking for someone to help me understand how key this number is to the viability of the project from the developer perspective. So that is definitely a question I have and I would love to learn more about as this process goes forward. Height, obviously, we have addressed and I understand that there's been a lot of work. Certainly, a question would be, can Building 3 come down an additional story on the east elevation? That seems to be a question that we all have. Here's a question also. This came to me when I was looking at public comment in previous meetings. Sharon, I'm not sure if this is too late in the game, but I'm just curious if you guys considered aligning the view corridors with the houses on Old County as opposed to the middle of the streets? And that's something that I was just curious, curious about from a design perspective. I don't ans, expect you to answer tonight, but something I was, I was wondering. Yeah, that'd be great if you would, wouldn't mind.
Just a little history on the view corridors. Before the previous Seminole even, we had the buildings laid out where they did not align with the eastern street grid at all. And then in some of the first meetings, and this is before the Greater East Side Neighborhood Group actually existed, there was the L'Oriola Neighborhood Group. And in talking with them, it became clear that we needed to start aligning the buildings as much as possible with the east side streets because that's where there's a break in the tree canopy. There's, there's a lot of
I see.
mature trees, but where you really get a vista is actually down, down the streets.
Okay.
So in, in looking at the building alignment now, we were, we aligned the break between Building 3 and 4 with Springfield and 2 and 3 with Sylvan. The alignment of this driveway is actually governed by an underground easement, stormwater easement that we, that can't be moved.
I see.
And so that actually did adjust some of the alignments of the building further north. So that's kind of the history behind the view quarters that we have.
Thank you. And then Sharon, just so you know, as, as the process moves forward also, I, I know I would really like examples of color and material combinations. I would like to know, I guess, what we get to look at and what the other commissioners would need to know and understand from a material standpoint to approve the design of the project. So that's just something, the 3D models are certainly helping, but high-quality materials...
I think a color and material sample board is something we typically submit, so we'll, we'll give that to you.
Terrific, thank you. Okay, and then just a couple more things. Just some quick questions based on the public comment. It's clear that there needs to be some sort of codified, codified responsibility in writing as far as the landscaping responsibility and the garbage responsibility. And I, I think that that's something that I know everybody in the process probably wants on all sides of it. I have one quick question about Old County Road and, I guess, just a clarification, the letters that we have in our packet have said that, have essentially said, if I'm, if I'm rephrasing this right, that electrification is really kind of a non-issue, but that they can't guarantee that high-speed rail won't be an issue as far as pushing out to Old County, that they don't want to do that. And they'll work towards not disrupting Old County, but they can't guarantee that that's an issue. Am I reading that right, Al or Greg?
I think that's a fair assessment, yeah.
Okay. Making sure. And then Paul had referred to a SAM Trans meeting that would be held and asked if the planning commission would get minutes for that. Is that something that we can request?
I guess. I mean, essentially, my understanding is we're going to get, the city staff is going to get together with SAM Trans staff and talk about whose responsibility is what in terms of the garbage issue.
Oh, I see.
And, and the maintenance issue. And really, there's, we're going to try and take care of that, but it's not really a condition of approval of this development because it's an existing condition, it's an existing problem that needs to be fixed. So it's sort of an informal meeting. It's not like a board meeting where, you know, we'll certainly take notes and we can share, we will share
Share the outcome.
what, what comes out of that.
Okay.
Brian, if you'd like to add to that, if it's okay with the chair?
Yeah, that'd be great.
The only other thing I'd add to it is that we have shared with the city already a schedule of when JPB does maintenance on the station. We talked about when that happens and when, when those things occur. So that's already out there. We've already sent a letter that talks about a common understanding of what JPB is responsible for and what the city is responsible for. So sort of all the facts that you're looking for, I think, are out there already in written form. And then the meeting, I think tomorrow, what we just want to say is, what do we need to do to make this happen now?
Okay. Perfect, thank you. And then a question about the shuttles and taxis. I understand that, at least through the East Side Connect project, that the taxis will be moved. And if I understand correctly, in my assessment of some of the mediation issues, that SAM Trans is willing to agree to move the shuttles to the west side? Is that, am I overstating it?
No, you're not overstating it at all. So two issues. Taxis can, taxis, we can help the situation with taxis by creating four or five taxi spots in the parking lot, which we are willing to do. What we hope to do is then also work with the city because we can create spots for the taxis to park in the transit center, but we can't make them park in the transit center without the city enforcing a no taxi issue. So it's a collaborative effort.
Sure.
But we can create a spot, we can have those spots painted, and we will do that now. We can do that now. It should be noted, taxis are a little bit different than shuttles.
Right.
Shuttles have certain patterns that you need to, to have adhered to. You want to have a visual connection between the shuttle and the train coming in so you can have an instantaneous connection. Taxis can kind of be put anywhere. You get off and you figure out where the taxis are. Shuttles, SAM Trans funds four shuttles in that area. There are other shuttles that operate out there. I think there's at least one other, we're not aware of, of all of them. The service to the east side right now is allowed. It's legally allowed by the city and we serve the street. If the city were to say today, no shuttle zone, we couldn't serve that side.
I see.
So, but what we've told, what we, what we have agreed to with city staff is the law of unintended consequences. We all understand right now what happens with the shuttles serving on this side and there are some concerns. What we want to do, what we, what we suggested to the city, and I think the city agrees, is that we're paying to study, we're, we're paying for a study, we're going to split the costs with the city to look at the consequences of doing that. By adding five to seven minutes of travel time for the shuttles and by pulling them through El Camino Real, what are the impacts on the traffic on El Camino Real? What are the impacts on shuttle ridership? What are those impacts? Because we feel that the city, in order to make a decision if they want to move shuttles, should know the facts. So that's kind of part one. The other part of the facts is, right now, the transit center, the new transit center is designed to complement the existing service patterns. So there'll be additional shuttle stops created on the west side in the new transit center, but it's designed to complement what's currently happening on the east. So the other part of the, the equation for these unintended consequences is, by moving more shuttles over to the west side, what does that do to the number of parking spots? What does that do to where those parking spots are located? In other words, if the shuttles need to be in a certain area, does that make your parking spots further? So what are the impacts to the design of the transit center? We feel that the city needs all that information to decide if it wants to move the shuttles. The last thing that I would note, and I've got a whole slew of business cards right here, is we understand there's bad behavior with shuttles. I've personally gone down and talked to our shuttle operator and I've said to him, if I get a complaint about shuttles through our customer service line, and they're on my business card here, what do you guys do? They say they go immediately down to the station, they send an inspector down, they talk to the operators about that bad behavior and changing the behavior. What I understand the behavior to be is going down residential streets and sometimes not parking in the shuttle areas. Those things can be, can be mitigated. What my shuttle operator said to me, and I want to be very clear that I'm not saying that, 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 that there's not an issue, but what he's told me is that he's checked every complaint that SAM Trans has got through our official records since 2011 and none of them had to do in operations on the east side. So that's why I have this stack of business cards here. It's not that issues aren't happening, it's that there's not sufficient feedback getting to SAM Trans. So to anybody who will listen, my suggestion is there's a number on the back here. You can call our customer service. Every complaint we have is logged and looked at. At the same time, my number's on the front. You can call me and say, Brian, I just put a complaint down to customer service. I'll go down and talk to our shuttle people and make sure those issues are being addressed. That's something, again, that can happen right now and I'm willing to, to, to help out with that. So that's kind of the flavor of the whole issue.
Perfect, thank you.
And the reason nobody calls is to, not trying to speak out, it's just because people, they don't have any faith. They, they know it's hopeless that they're working against a bureaucracy that doesn't listen. So it's like, I know you're trying, but it's...
That's why I've, I've suggested that my number's on the front. If you call the back and then you say, Brian, I just called the back and you go down and check on it, you can call me.
Brian, you were there at the meeting, but we had five violations in ten seconds. I mean, it's just, it's, let's be real.
All right. And then, finally, just one, one other comment to Legacy. I know that it's a particular concern, biking and cycling has been mentioned many times, but one thing that wasn't mentioned, or was mentioned only once by our last speaker, was the cycling through the project. And I know that, that that's a concern of, of some of us up here too. Being able to see a bike path through the actual project would be something we'd be wanting to see moving forward, and I didn't really see that.
Oh, we never gonna have it.
Oh, well, that would be why I'm not seeing it.
Oh, I wanted to get it to the speaker.
Okay. Thank you. Well, that would be why I didn't see it, because it's not going to happen. Thanks, Paul, please.
There, there are some geographic kind of issues with being able to get a continuous bike path on the site. You know, the obvious place to put it is, you know, along, along the tracks.
Okay.
And when you get to Holly, there's a great problem there. There's existing redwoods we're, we're retaining on both sides, they're on an existing slope bank.
Okay.
And there really isn't a, a way to get someone riding along that edge there. And from a grade perspective, there isn't any really, any way to get from this upper level down to the lower level when you take into consideration the utilities that are there as well. You can't just dig into the ground to get down to that, to the, you know, there's the, there's that slightly elevated sidewalk that runs along Holly there, so you, you really can't get around that way. So you have, you know, this built-in discontinuity that's there, which is pretty significant in terms of somebody really using it.
Right.
So you can get, you could, you could, it could be set up so you could ride along the edge, but you'd have to probably pop out here and then you're popping out to the sidewalk.
I see.
Which, you know, depending on your age group, you, you could legally ride on the sidewalk if you're a kid, but if you're adults, you're not supposed to be doing that.
Right.
So, and then if you go, I don't know if this goes to the next side or not, no. I'll get, I'll get stuck in the morass of this, of this, of where these... But anyway, that's really, that's really the basics of it.
That's the problem.
That's the basic, that's the basic problematic part of having something that could have any continuity to it.
Okay.
All right.
Right, right.
In terms of being on the road, that's, that's
Right.
I was addressing sort of internally.
You were addressing the project, thank you. Thanks, Paul. Okay, those were all of my questions and comments.
Did I just say one?
Sure.
I think it was Sam that mentioned it. I've never heard anyone advocate that the turrets or the, the tall parts of, of the Holly Street buildings, that they be increased back to where they were. I don't know if, how everybody else feels about that, but is that a way to add some square footage if we take it away from other buildings, namely Building 3?
Are you sure we can go from three back to four and that's from that area?
It sounds, it sounds like consensus, at least from those people that do have an opinion, is that that's where the concentration of the height should be. And I, I will be honest, you know, looking at, at the, the animation, you almost feel deflated when you see this and you kind of expect it to be kind of, you know, culminating right there and, and it's, it's just not. It's kind of almost like they forgot something. I don't know, maybe you guys are going to put a Legacy partner sign up there or something. I'm kidding. Just, I, I, that's the first time I've heard somebody mention that, so.
Any additional comments or feedbacks for Legacy before we close the study session? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and move on. Thank you all for participating in the study session and I believe the public hearing is already on the agenda for our next meeting, so we look forward to seeing you all back then. Thank you. And I'm going to go ahead and move on to the next part of our agenda, reports, correspondence and general information. Lisa, I do have some questions as far as, under a report on recent city council actions. Can you hear me okay?
Okay.
Okay. I understand the city council voted with staff's recommendation and EDAC's recommendation at their last meeting to approve the Lamarc Commercial District, which of course is what I was referring to when I said the subject that was in our minutes. I guess I was wondering if it's possible to have an update on any minor use permits or conditional use permits in the early stage that comes to your department? I'm just curious how, how we move forward and kind of want to be kept apprised of the situation.
Certainly. And what we could do as, assuming that the council will, on the second reading, which is scheduled for next Monday, assuming they pass the ordinance, which will then go into effect 30 days after that, that's something that staff can certainly do is keep the commission apprised as far as who's coming in and inquiring about use permits, permits, if that's what I'm understanding.
Right.
You're interested in kind of just seeing how that all works out.
Yeah, I just want to see how that...
Sure, sure. That, that's easy.
Thank you.
We can let you know.
Do you have any other reports on city council actions?
No, other than I was going to mention what occurred last Monday, but I think everybody is up to date on that. It was a 3-2 vote, I think most folks are aware of, and we'll be going back on Monday.
Great, thank you. Planning commission comments or reports? I just have, oh, go ahead, Michael. No, 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 go ahead.
I just wanted to make my final comment up here. Because I believe this will be my final meeting. As planning commissioner, I would like to thank staff and my fellow As planning commissioner, I would like to thank staff and my fellow commissioners for making this a very valuable life experience for me. The circumstances surrounding my non-reappointment have been a learning experience. In hindsight, it was not only a lesson in communication for me, but also for those who chose not to reappoint me. Our past and current work on this commission and the issues before it deserve as much continuity and focus as we can give to it. So in spite of my city council run, I have reapplied for my post on this commission and it is my sincere hope that the decision makers see fit to allow me to serve again with these fine people. In the event of my run being unsuccessful, I want to continue my work on this commission. I believe that the work that we do and the filter we provide for the city council is very important and I just feel I have work that has yet to be done.
Thank you. I have then just two comments, I guess, and one question. First of all, I just wanted to apologize for my unorthodox leaving of last week's meeting at nine-thirty. I had told Scott before the meeting, but I didn't tell the rest of you. I had a flight to catch and I had to leave at nine-thirty to catch it. It was several hundred dollars cheaper than the alternative and based on the agenda, I truly thought, given the time we had put in the May sixth meeting on the issue, I really thought it wouldn't be a problem. So I apologize for that and I should have let all of you know in advance about that and-
You just thought you didn't care.
And, yeah, it's done. But no more red-eye flights for me and I am sorry about that, so I wanted to let you know. And I also did have a question for staff about, I guess, maybe the appropriateness of... I understand that the city council is changing the way that they're interviewing commissioners and I'm wondering if they would be open to, or if it's appropriate to offer questions for commission appointments, particularly since it's our commission. Does that question make sense?
I think so. Could you, I think you could offer those to city staff.
Okay, great.
And the city staff could consider those and suggest them to the manager's office and city council. So we'll take a look at them. We'd, we'd be open to that. I mean, we would be open to that. So, yeah, if you could, what do you think, Ray? You okay with that?
I think that'd be the best approach to work through staff. It's, and just, but just keep in mind the city councils is in charge of the process that they employ.
Right. And so then if any of the commissioners had questions, they should go ahead and, and submit them to Lisa? Okay, great. And I understand they will be interviewing somebody on the eighth? Is that correct?
That's my understanding, the eighth.
Okay. Great. So questions before the eighth to Lisa, if you have any? Great, okay, that was, that was it for me. Any correspondence?
None tonight.
Great, okay. Planning staff comments, reports and updates on current projects?
Yes. This week on Wednesday, and I provided a copy to all the planning commissioners on the dais, but we are having a community workshop or two community workshops to provide the community with the outcome of some of the data collection that we've done for the downtown parking study. So there will be two opportunities for merchants and adjacent residents to come and hear about these results. The first meeting will be, well, all of the meetings are on Wednesday, July nineteenth. There will be a meeting in the morning from eight-thirty AM to nine-thirty AM at Pia Cherry's at seven-twenty-seven Laurel Street.
July nineteenth, correct? June or July?
June. It's this Wednesday.
This Wednesday.
Did I say July? I'm sorry, it's June nineteenth, thank you. And then in the evening on June nineteenth, from six-thirty PM to eight o'clock PM, there'll be another opportunity to hear these results at the First Baptist Church at seven-eighty-seven Walnut Street. So, and I left a couple copies out on the desk there, so hopefully some members of the public saw those and picked some up. And then just real briefly, as a preview for the next planning commission hearing, which is on July first, we will be bringing forward a project proposed by Clear Channel, which is a proposal to construct a new LED screen billboard at the end of eight-hundred Branston. So this is a project that would require a hearing with the city council for a lease agreement, but the planning commission's charge will be to act on the actual use, on the actual use permit for the project and architectural review. We also have a proposal by T-Mobile to upgrade an existing facility. They are proposing to incorporate three additional panel antennas to an existing facility located at one-thousand-one Chestnut Street. And we have another project proposed for fifteen-oh-one Industrial Road, which is a monument sign. And this is coming before the planning commission because of the type of sign designed that it is. Monument signs are required to be reviewed by the planning commission. So those are three items coming forward at the next hearing.
Great.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Lisa.
Will we have anything on the Transit Village on the next meeting?
No, not till, not till the seventeenth. I'm sorry, is that correct? Fifteenth. Okay, great. All right, well, in that case, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting at ten-thirty-four.